...opportunity for the acting mayor to obtain some meeting skills and to chair the meeting. So, on that note, I will be switching seats with councillor Ebony Logans, our acting mayor for July and August. Thank you, Ebony.
Thanks for joining us tonight. I'd like to welcome back councillor Parkinson as well. Glad that everything went well with you and you're back with us. So, we'll just move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Great. All right. So, we have first presentation on urban deer management by Dr. Sarah Dubois, so please come on up. We'll welcome you to the stand.
Technology.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Sorry, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yeah, if you are ready. So, thank you so much, Mayor, acting mayor, and the rest of council and staff for having me here this evening. I did come over from Vancouver today, but I want to let you know my island roots run really deep. I was born and raised in Langford. I did graduate from Belmont, so I hope you won't hold that against me. But I do have a lot of my Wildarc family here with me, so, just to recognize them and their support. I was fortunate enough to return to Wildarc and manage that facility for five years, but now on the lower mainland, I do act as the chief scientific officer for the province. So, I wanted to talk to you about what's been happening, and of course, this is a very controversial issue, but it's been very interesting because in the last 20 years that I've been studying wildlife biology, working in the field, and teaching wildlife biology, there's been a major shift in what's happened in wildlife management. I feel that unfortunately municipalities are now the one that is caught in the headlights because we've seen a dramatic shift in the last five years where the local governments are now being tasked with basically wildlife management, and you aren't given the tools or resources to do this. And so, this presentation was created basically to help municipalities look at other issues and concerns and address some of the myths that are out there. I did act on the CRD's expert resource working group for the regional deer management strategy, but I found unfortunately that process was quite flawed and the information that came through it was very, very filtered. So, hopefully I can answer some questions that are outstanding today in this presentation. So, why is the SPCA involved? You're probably asking. Hopefully you know about our Wildarc facility, but we do, of course, do cat and dog shelters and spay neuters and outreach programs throughout the province. But the reality is, and the organization has been serving both the public and animal interests for 120 years in the province. We are here to investigate public reports of animal cruelty and to take necessary steps to alleviate distress. We're also a resource to provide policy and scientific experience, expertise to government, and that comes not only for companion animal issues, but also on farm wildlife issues and exotic animals. And also, we're here to advocate for evidence-based solutions and to help educate the public on many of these issues. So, why are we concerned and how have we been voicing our concerns on this issue? And really, this comes as a mandate of our animal protection agency. We do, under federal legislation, have the mandate to investigate any time there is a willful or unnecessary cause of pain and suffering in an animal. This applies to wildlife as well as to any other companion or farm animal. But note, under the provincial legislation, it applies only to wildlife in captivity. So, the two different types of legislation, but for the urban deer issue, of course, this has come up because the deer are actually trapped and they would fall under this legislation. But the reality is, an activity can be completely legal in practice, but we may be opposed to it in principle for various scientific and ethical reasons. We have a big challenge, and it really comes down to these three things. There's a legal definition of what is humane, but that is what the law says you can do today to an animal. There's also a scientific definition of humane, and that, as a scientist, is what I work to try to advocate for, is that that's an activity which is quick, minimizes distress and pain, and it also takes an individual animal into consideration, both physically and psychology. But if I ask my mom, what is humane to her? There's a whole different level of what happens when some people think about societally. There's a different definition out there. So, she will think about the methods. It has to be done quick, and of course, the animal shouldn't suffer. But what about the fairness issue? Did we give this animal another chance? What were the things that led to this animal's need to remove it? What's going on behind the scenes in terms of conservation? Do we need to remove this animal? And who's doing it? Is it controllable? Is it being done professionally? So, there's many different layers, and unfortunately, this is where we can get into kind of a debate because that one word is used differently by many individuals in different ways. So, a really good example I use on this in my class is that the legal definition for trapping a beaver, for example, is you can use an underwater trap and they can take up to five minutes to die. But scientifically, we know that we would never apply that type of trapping mechanism to any other mammal species, so that wouldn't meet the scientific definition of humane, and it certainly wouldn't meet my mom's definition of humane either. So, the BCSPCA, we've been asked many times, and it's very clear on our website, we're not opposed to hunting deer for food in a humane, responsible, and sustainable manner that's done by qualified and experienced hunters, abiding by applicable laws and regulations. We are not opposed to killing an individual wild animal that poses a direct threat to public safety. Those animals have to be, of course, food-conditioned, so their behavior cannot be altered to return back to that natural state. But we are opposed to indiscriminate culling of deer, particularly is, of course, this issue, because it may not meet the scientific justification for the call, and it may not be able to be done humanely depending on who's acting that out. But we recognize there are many, many challenges that communities are facing, and it comes down to public safety, sometimes it's nuisance complaints. What about the animals? You're getting, you're hearing from all sides on this issue. But if we look at the core of the challenges that are bringing these to your forefront is, we have things like wildlife feeding, and I need to congratulate you on your recent wildlife feeding bylaw that you passed in May. I think that's quite excellent, and we'll touch on that in just a moment. But also, we know there's habitat loss is a real challenge for us, and reduction of predators. So, there's all these things happening out in that ecosystem that is affecting these challenges for your communities. But at the end of the day, being tasked as a local government to manage very complex, long-term wildlife management issues is just really unfair without the resources, experience, and expertise. If we look historically at this issue, the Union of BC Municipalities was asked by, asked the province to create a strategy for municipalities, and they came up with the Urban Ungulate Conflict Analysis, it's a document that's available publicly, and they basically gave you a menu of options that you can use as a local government, but they asked you to implement it. The ministry said then, if you're going to go through and create a strategy, we need you to form a local committee. They didn't really give you instructions on how to recruit appropriately for this committee. They went and said, you should get your community's input, do a survey, have a citizens' group. Again, proper instructions as to how to do that representatively were not given. They said change bylaws, but the relevance of enforcement was really not emphasized, and that's been a big challenge in some of these other communities. Deer count, how to do that, again, was something that you were asked to do in a community that wanted to manage deer, but they didn't tell you really how to go about doing that. And then suite of options you can pick from, but when you come to the end of the day and you want to apply for a permit, the ministry actually publicly admits that they don't audit any of these processes. So, they don't verify if you've done any of these properly or to the full extent to prove the need to cull, for example. So, overpopulation is a subject we need to address in a community-by-community approach because there is a perceived overabundance in some communities, and in others, there's an actual shift because of some habitat changes. But we do need to really determine and have a scientific definition of how to count these animals properly. We know that many communities, their tolerance levels, even though the population might not be out there, that they've been reached. The public tolerance for deer in some areas of BC has been reached. But we really need to address these strategies for individual situations with different solutions. How you address a food-conditioned deer issue versus a rogue gang deer issue, and I'll explain that one, is very different in how we manage these things. But whether or not you have a deer issue now, or you think you might want to have one in the future, you can always use mitigation strategies, and this is something that is well-established, a lot of literature out there, and easy to implement with community groups' resources. So, speed limits, road lighting, landscaping, using signage flashers, reflectors near the roads, of course, fencing and netting, deterrence, chemical repellents, deer planting specific, as well as some hazing techniques have been used in certain communities, and public education. So, it really comes down to starting here first before there's a need for a knee-jerk reaction and to looking at something like a call. Lyme disease is something that's thrown out there, is a reason why we need to act quickly. And I just wanted to acknowledge, I have a good friend who suffers from Lyme disease. It's horrible. It's very underdiagnosed in a human population, but we do know how to diagnose it in other animals and other species, so we can actually look at those trends rather than looking at necessarily the human stats. So, the incidence of Lyme disease in dogs, for example, you can see where the hotspots are really on the east coast. We can also measure ticks themselves, so you can look at the tick population and see where Lyme disease is actually carried by those ticks. If you do look at the human case data, the BC Centre for Disease Control did report seven people who were diagnosed in 2013 with newly acquiring it. They suggested that two of those people got it outside BC. But again, the tick infection rate that they're reporting, so the number of ticks that are carrying that disease is less than 1% on Vancouver Island in British Columbia, actually. High endemic areas, that tick infection rate goes up to 40%. It's really important to note that birds and rodents are actually prevalent hosts of Lyme disease. So, just because it's called a deer tick, it's actually just a common name for that particular tick, but we found birds with these ticks carrying Lyme disease at Wildarc. We've never found a deer with a tick that has carried Lyme disease yet at Wildarc. Is wildlife feeding a problem? It is, and I'm so glad that you guys brought this recently to your council, of course, because we know under the Wildlife Act only dangerous wildlife are covered, but we know many people put out food for deer or raccoons, and that causes many issues. But the enforcement is going to be key for you going forward. I did a study with my students in 2012, and we looked at 155 municipalities. Only 18 of them actually had bylaws at that time for any of wildlife species. I'm really glad with your language because you've gone after wildlife as a whole. Some have just said deer, some have just said pigeons. It's a real piecemeal approach, but putting wildlife in there is definitely the best way to go. Winnipeg actually did a really comprehensive study, put GPS collars on deer and tracked them around going to city, and they could actually tell that the main problems were repeat feeders. People were actually strategically feeding these deer and causing some of these biggest issues in that community. The issue of First Nations has been brought up, and I think we need to acknowledge that First Nations, of course, have a constitutionally protected rights to hunt, fish, and trap on traditional territory. They can seek permission to access also other First Nation territories for hunting deer, for example. They don't require a license, and no reporting is required, and there's no specific species restrictions or seasons or bag limits. And this was brought up because of the deer meat that was donated by Oak Bay went to a local First Nations. But I think we need to acknowledge, there were some of those members that actually raised concerns with us, and other band members did too from other bands, because they wondered, is it really culturally sensitive to give culled animals to these communities? In other communities in British Columbia, the food was given to food banks, so these First Nations thought, well, that makes us be perceived as the needy. It also doesn't respect our traditional values to hunt and kill animals by using this particular method. And finally, when we think about it, that you're removing pest animals from a very privileged, very white community and giving them to the First Nations, that just didn't come off very well. When we look at the capture technique, we use this capture technique in many different ways to study. We relocate animals this way, but you can also use this trap to use the calling technique. But the complete success of this is dependent on many, many different factors. So, what's the weather like? How many are you trying to capture at once? The location. So, the trap itself isn't a bad thing per se. We've looked at studies, the average mortality rate in capturing 680 animals was less than 5%, so you do need to use them with caution, but they can be used appropriately. Contraception has come up as a big question, and it's been used for decades in the zoo community. We've seen a couple of different varieties, a vaccine called PZP and Gonokon have both been used widely in small-scale projects in North America, including CFBS Quimult. We forget about this, but, and I'll touch upon this particular case study, and also James Island, we've used these products for these communities. It does require the animals are captured and monitored over time, but it is highly effective in a long-term strategy for targeted population. Culling, of course, is a large-scale removal of deer, but we found it to be indiscriminate, so you're not necessarily picking out specific age animals, gender. If you have a bad animal, so that rogue deer, we've seen this in Cranbrook, there was a particular gang of animals that was kind of going around, bad deer in town, but when they put the traps out, they just caught the first 25 animals that came in. They didn't remove the bad ones that were the problem, so that can be problematic. In really open systems, they can be ineffective. So, if you're in a community that has five different other municipalities that border you, guess what? The deer are going to come back. It is short-term, and it's not a sustainable approach. You've got to think about how you're going to process the meat as well because you can't sell it. There's typically one example that's out there in the world called the Montana Project, and it's over 10 years they've been culling, but after 10 years, they still haven't figured out their problem. You do have to note on the east coast, they're looking at deer densities of like 60 deer or 174 deer per kilometer squared. That is uncomparable compared, our highest populations of deer in Kimberley were 20 deer per square kilometer. So, need to really consider those types of things. And it is going to be the most controversial wildlife management tool to consider in a community, and we've seen it divide communities very strategically. Cindy and James Island, this is a very different scenario. This is the Fallow Deer Project. So, this is a population of deer that was farmed on these islands, and they just let them escape and kind of go fallow technically. And they were uncontrolled, there's no natural predators, and so it was a real problem because they were eating themselves off the island. There was 2,000 deer on that island, and they needed to be reduced just for themselves. They were actually suffering significantly and affecting other animals on that island. So, they did reduce that population, and we did not oppose that. We actually worked on their environmental assessment with Parks Canada to look at that project because those, again, there was a scientific evidence as to why those deer needed to be removed. James Island went the opposite direction, and they did a spayback project, and they actually treated 41 deer on that island. CFBS Quimult in 2002 to 2004 had a challenge. They decided to implement a small-scale research project. Apparently, there were some really nice flowers the admirals had and wanted to address some of the overeating, so they said, you know, let's find out, is there overpopulation? So, they trapped the deer, they put on radio collars, they monitored them, did they come in and out of CFB? Are they a unique population? What's their home range size? What are they eating? What is their health like? It was a really interesting study. They found they had really high survivorship. They didn't find any ticks at that time on these animals, and they recognized, yeah, there's really high-quality habitat, and they're browsing a lot. So, if we want to, you know, stabilize that population, they went ahead and they did a spayback project. If we look in the communities in BC that have undertaken a call in the last five years, Cranbrook was the first, and again, they had this rogue deer population. They said, we don't have a deer overpopulation, just these gang deer, and they've conducted three calls, but they actually, in the first call, they have whitetail deer and mule deer up there, and they caught half and half, and actually, the mule deer were the problem, so, you know, the wrong species were trapped. They also did community surveys twice, but less than 5% of the community actually responded. And it was a voluntary survey, so you can imagine only those that really want to participate participated. So, Kimberley, they had, they actually had an overpopulation. They had a dogs, a few dogs that were injured. They actually had a woman who was hospitalized. You know, again, they had some really aggressive deer, and we're not opposed to removing that individual aggressive deer, but their population has rebounded since their call of 100 animals, and they've used a dog hazing project since. And Invermere, questionable whether they had an overpopulation, but the community really galvan, this really galvanized the community. They actually implemented, you know, the call without consultation as certain residents stated, and they actually got a Supreme Court injunction to stop that call, and it dragged out for two years, and the courts cost Invermere, unfortunately, a lot of money and resources, but if there was proper consultation, maybe that could have been resolved. In Elkford, they did a call 39 deer in 2014. Unfortunately, the elk herds then moved into the deer habitat that was now left vacant, and you can't call elk in Elkford. You can imagine that was not going to go over very well in that community. So, they've decided they're going to pilot, join a partnership for a pilot project on a relocation, and we'll see, we'll see what happens. All these communities now are going to invest in that going forward. In the CRD, we saw a process that started in 2012 that led to the call of 11 animals in 2015 in Oak Bay, but we really have no sense of how many deer are actually in that area. That wasn't studied. We don't know where they move and how they move, and yet, it was purported to be a success. But, you know, we have some real challenges with this. So, the lessons that we've learned to date from this and from many other communities in North America, because this has been going on for more than 20 years on the east coast, they've been challenged with some of these issues. We know that indiscriminate culls just don't work long-term. As an enforcement agency, the BCSPCA can't legally stop a call because it's not inhumane under that law, but we are opposed if it doesn't meet the societal definition of humane. The reality at the end of the day, whether you like deer or not, is that this is a very expensive endeavor for local municipalities. And so, we know in the CRD, over $250,000 was spent, in Oak Bay, $52,000 was spent, so that's over $20,000-plus dollars per animal that was actually managed in that project. Other municipalities have done it a bit differently, but at the end of the day, it's, if we learn to manage properly. The biggest complaint in Helena, Montana, came from the hunting community. They said there aren't enough deer in the bush for us to hunt anymore because they're all being driven into the city now because they were just calling. It becomes a sink of animals. So, it's amazing where, when the SPCA and the hunting community actually agree on something pretty fundamental. Deer calls have not resolved any of these wildlife conflicts in any of these towns to date. So, I would, you know, like to just extend, you know, we do, are, we're working with other community groups locally. We do have a number of brochures and educational programs that we hope we can offer because we need to know what's next. We know this trial is happening in the Kootenays, and we hope to see how that works. The Urban Wildlife Stewardship Society is a citizens' group that came out of frustration from the Oak Bay call, and they are now moving forward with a spayback project in that community, but they're really looking at all these mitigation strategies as well. And we're here hopefully to provide a policy consulting role with local governments and work with the Urban Wildlife Steward Society to provide public workshops. Our first is going to be in Quimult in the end of September to hopefully diffuse some of the attention that's out there to help people who live in that community who want deer in their community, help others who have gardening issues, and how do we address this as a community to find alternative solutions? So, thank you very much. Here's my contact information, and I will leave a set of brochures for anybody who'd like it. So, hopefully I have time for some questions.
Great. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Thank you, Dr. Dubois. I'm always confused about this issue of the deer, and it's good because I'm usually confused about a lot of things, but we live in a very isolated community, and anecdotally, it seems to me, like having been born here, that we have more deer in our, in our urban setting now. We haven't really changed geographically where, where we live, and we're right next door to probably some of the most vast uninhabited area.
Yes.
So, there's a migration of deer, I think, from their traditional territory into, into what I call the downtown area or in our urban area. So, what's the, I guess, what's the accepted density in there? Is there more deer still in the wild as opposed to here? Are they migrating here? And then once, like, and this applies more to the broader scope, when they get to Oak Bay, do they continue to breed in there? Like you say, you know, I can get Cranbrook and that because their deer are migratory, they'll follow the food. When they get to Oak Bay, I don't believe they're migrating from their traditional territories. I believe they're just overbreeding in there, right?
Well, a lot of those questions, unfortunately, we haven't answered. So, that's a big question mark. How many deer are out there?
Right.
Where are they moving? So, in Oak Bay, we know that deer, we've actually had volunteers go out and watch the deer over the course of day. They'll move from Victoria to Sanich to Oak Bay in the same day. So, depending on what you call migration, they're not doing long-scale migration. Their home ranges are, especially for females, are pretty small. But in terms of Suk, when you think of the development that has happened in parts of Suk, we need to actually address that question. We need to find out how many deer actually live here and how many live in the bush, and are they moving between populations? So, that's a study. You've got a University of Victoria, you've got primed keen students that are here. We should be studying these issues, and that's what the Urban Wildlife Stewardship Society is hoping to get support for in the future.
Yeah, and I guess you're answering my question. We haven't done a root cause analysis of where the issue lies, right?
Yeah, so why spend money on trying to just get rid of the problem when we don't know what the problem is? So, that's, that's where we need to take a step back, and that's what, you know, I'm sure the CRD process intended to take some, some broad view perspectives, but those research studies didn't, we didn't do them, and Winnipeg did. So, Winnipeg is a much bigger city, much, you know, you can imagine what that's like to have deer walking through those streets. So, they did that study. They found those repeat feeders are one of the biggest problems in those communities. So, if you isolate and remove the repeat feeders, and you start looking at your boulevard plantings, your, your city plantings, to make sure they're deer-friendly, so that we're not attracting them in. So, there's things that we can do to prevent that if they are abundant in this community, and we don't know that. And then if, you know, communities want to stabilize them, and you are isolated, you have an opportunity to do that. It wouldn't be useful to use even a contraception in a population that's highly transient. So, there's a lot of, lot of questions we still have to answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Tate?
Thank you, Dr. Dubois, for your presentation and to all the volunteers at Wildarc. You used the term hazing a few times in your presentation.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Yeah, so, so basically, it's scaring them off. So, it's using non, non, yeah, really pots and pans, but also, they have used dogs. So, they actually have trained dogs, border collies, if you can recruit your community of border collie owners, who appropriately train their dogs not to actually nip at the animal, but they've used them very strategically to remove them from properties, and Kimberley was that community that did that. It does have to be repeated over a period of time, but if you had a dog-walking community that's already out there walking their dogs, and you just gave them the locations that they should go to, maybe that would be a good, resourceful way to use appropriately. You do need to get proper permissions. You can't have dogs chase wildlife under the Wildlife Act, so you do have to get those types of permissions. There is currently, I believe it's Elkford, who has a motion to UBCM right now on that to allow more readily permits for UBCM this year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Councillor Casper, and then Parkinson?
Yeah, my question doesn't relate to deer. Have you done any work with geese and the problems associated with geese in community lands, parks, et cetera, open fields?
Golf courses, yeah. So, we know that there are some different types of challenging issues with geese because they're flighted birds, and so, hazing them, there is a resident population of geese. I don't know which population lives out here in Suk and where their habitual spots are. There is some really good success out there with oiling, addling, and hazing programs, so we would always recommend that first. Again, if you get to a point where you feel you need to cull and reduce the population, you legally have that option, that pursuit, but unfortunately, it doesn't knock it back ever to that level where the addling program actually will, over time, reduce the population. So, again, we need to know how many there are out there, where do they live, and how do we get this so that we're spending money appropriately, so that what we actually do is going to be working still in five years' time.
So, did you, your organization or yourself, your office, did you hear of the culling program that the feds in the province allowed with the CRD out in central Sanich on private farmland?
Yes, we did. Yeah, so...
Do you have any involvement in that, or?
We weren't involved in the process. We would have, it would have been great if they would have asked us to, hey, can you review this like Parks Canada did at the start? We had complaints from the public that they, they were concerned the method of breaking necks was inappropriate, and for a large conscious bird that would be under the law. However, we did speak to the provincial vet, they did give us the proper protocol that was going to be implemented for the mechanism, and went through their protocol as how they're going to do that. Again, removing 250 birds from that population may not have the outcome that they actually want. So, the addling program, I think, is, if they don't get aggressive with that, they're going to have this problem forever.
Right. Okay. I was just, you know, raising that issue because I know that, that it has been a problem in our community. It's probably one that, that we hear about most, but no one's ever approached us or, or the CRD about trying to do something about it. Quite frankly, you know, a lot of people have learned to live with the deer population, but we felt it was important to bring in the bylaw that would at least have some restrictive measures on the feeding and promoting the, the act of feeding.
Absolutely.
Because it just encourages families of deer, and they're young, to get into that habit that they know.
And geese, feeding geese. People, you know, that used to be an activity as a young child, you go to the pond and feed the ducks and geese.
So, it's funny, I appreciate your comments, and, and we haven't been asked to do a call or participate in a call, but, but, you know, our past council in 212, I don't think there was an appetite to even consider it, so...
I appreciate that. I just, as a member of the CRD, I think it's important you know what hap, discussions are happening because those are, I'm sure your tax dollars are going into that process process as well. But the, the geese issue, again, if you, if we start to address these issues before you have a problem, then, then we won't get into this controversial place that other communities have been.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dubois.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thanks.
And I was just wondering because of the weather, the way it is now with, with the fires and that, whether it's bringing more of the animals into the town and whether you've noticed that or not?
Well, I think we can always rely on any fresh water source that's still available to wildlife, they're going to seek those out. So if you do have those types of, you know, even in your backyard, if you have ponds and things like that that are naturally or unnaturally abundant, you're going to draw wildlife in. In terms of issues, I would refer to my Wildarcians to see if they've had extra complaints lately, but not to our knowledge, you know, I think it's something to be mindful of because maybe you will see animals in your backyard. You, you know, there was a bear swimming in a swimming, swimming pool in Niemo.
Right.
You know, I'm sure that doesn't happen every year, so it's hot out there for them too. So we just have to recognize, either you take those water sources away because you don't want them in your backyard or you just live with it.
I lived in Germany for 14 years and how they looked after the deer population there was in the forest, in the woods out there, they actually have the wooden feeders attached to the trees out in the woods quite a ways away. And then the forest workers would be filling them all up so that they didn't come into the villages at all.
And then that's a different strategy. I think that's probably 100 population too. So, so that was strategic for where they put those feeders.
I don't think so.
But at the same time, you know, we, we do have, it's a question to ask, you know, we should ask, we should find, you know, if the local rotten gum club are seeing fewer animals in their communities and are they all coming into town? So, so there are questions still to be answered.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Sort of the vegetation aspect of it. I think in any, sorry, I think in any areas where there's been. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. We're going to open for a public comment in just one moment, so you'll just have to come to the mic and state your name and address.
Okay.
No problem, yeah. Glad you have something to say. Thank you very much, Dr. Dubois, for your presentation.
Thanks.
And you can come forward to the mic if you'd like and anyone else after for public comment, yeah. You have to state your name and address, please.
There we go. My name is Dana Lipka and I am affiliated with the Wildarc as well. As far as the movement of deer, I think what we see is they have corridors in which they travel, of course, and any of the areas that they're moving to, we're seeing successional forest. So anywhere where there's been kind of a movement of sort of the, the older trees, the cedars and such, and where there's areas where there's been construction, we've got new browse that kind of comes up, so poplars, any of the vegetation that they would feed on, and that's why they're sort of moving into these, these new corridors. So you see them in the forest and then they have their pathways and they're, they're moving into sort of the town, the town areas and then moving back. So they do have quite a, a large travel range that they're, they're moving in and out of. So I think that's why we see them on the outskirts quite a bit, so. But yeah, vegetation is a big one. Browsing, that's huge for them wherever they're getting it, so.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Ron Dumont, 7094 West Coast Road. I've lived in this area for sixty, sixty-three some years. The deer used to be in the bushes. Our people seem to be quite interested in retraining the deer, retraining the, the raccoons, the bears. All those animals are very trainable. So what do we do? We feed them. They say, oh, it's good feed down in Suk, let's go to Suk. And I spend quite a bit of time out in the forest near the earth filled dam out in Butler's. No deer out there, lots of food out there, lots of water, the deer are here. We lost 70 deer on our property along the West Coast Road last year for people feeding deer because once they've been fed, they rush to the feeder without looking as they cross the road and boom, they're dead. So people that feed the deer are killing the deer and drawing them to Suk. The same thing with the bears. When I was young, never seen a bear, I lived in Otter Point at Camp Lake Road, Otter Point area, never seen a bear for 10 years. Now they go through my property down on West Coast Road on a regular basis. In fact, last Thursday, the big one, the big boar went through, he looks like a boat wagon. He don't worry about if you've got a fence around your chickens, he just knocks it down and takes the chickens. So we're teaching the wildlife to come here. And it's the same in Oak Bay, it's the same in Victoria. A deer, a bear, take advantage of what they can get easily. And when you start to see the deer here having twins all the time, that means they got too much food. Nature just sets the whole system up, the more they got to eat, the bigger their litters. The bear, two years ago that lived around my place had three cubs. The second year she had three. That means she's getting lots of food and they're getting lots of food. But people that think they're doing favor to the deer and feeding them are crazy. And until we teach the people to stop doing it, culling won't make any difference because it's like water, it just keeps filling in. Until people understand that. The other thing is deer are getting very aggressive. They'll actually attack a cougar. We had one of our neighbors watched two deer, one being held down, the other deer was attacking the cougar. And that's the type of thing that we instill in them, this ability to be around you. I drove down to Sosinu's and back today, three times during the day, it stopped all the traffic because deer were crossing the road. They're pretty, but they're sure tough on a car when you hit them. So we got to do some training before you start any of this scientific stuff. It's us that's causing it. And this idea of putting a deer proof vegetation, when deer are young, they taste everything. If they don't like it, they'll spit it out, but after a while, they'll actually eat that stuff because they're training themselves. So you'll find deer eating things now that never ate before and it's not good for them. When I worked in Sun River, I seen deer that were falling apart, their bodies were falling off the bones. I have never seen that in my whole life. And I was a hunter, all the deer were in the bush, very little is here. And then we changed the hunting rules, that you can't hunt anywhere in the near area. So bear, or the deer know. They're not stupid. They're easy to train. You'll all find that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dumont.
Ellen Lewis, 5526 Suk Road. I want to concur with what Ron just said too. And, I mean, as a farmer, it's practically impossible to farm with this deer, cougar, bear. I mean, I've been affected by all of the above and, and geese, as Counselor Casper said, there's a, that's a serious issue. And what's happened too, I was raised in the Prairies and it's happening in the Prairies too, the cougar moving and the bear moving and moose are moving in because farmers used to shoot them if there were too many around, they just did. They didn't kill everything, but they, they had a fear of man. But there is no fear. There is no fear of man. People stop on the road and let the deer cross. Wrong. Honk your horn, make a lot of noise and scare them because they're not suppo, they're supposed to be afraid, afraid of man, they're not supposed to, we're not supposed to feed them. Feeding them, of course, brings them in. And try to farm when you're, I mean, who's going to replace my costs? I mean, the deer come in and we've put lots of fencing, I mean, and I have six foot fencing on, on three acres, you know, but we've got over a thousand feet of, of six foot fencing. It's really expensive. And a bear will come in and knock it down and the deer come over, same. So there has to be consultation with the public in this and giving, giving them needles so they don't have babies and all, it's just that, that's just ridiculous, I think. I think it's, you know, it's too many, you put them down and that's, that's really what you have to do. And food, it is food. Again, it's good, healthy food. The geese are good, healthy food. You know, I, I was on Fuji when we were looking at what people did before there were stores here. It was really interesting talking to the old folks. What did they say? Oh, well, we used to eat deer. Oh, well, I ate bear. Oh, well, I ate cougar. Oh, I didn't like cougar. Oh, well, I didn't like bear. But they ate what was here because that's the food and it's a natural thing to do. So I think we have to realize we're a part of this community as well as the animals and we should, and we realize that it is really good food.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Hi, Fran Dash, 2387 French Road North. I note that emblem is a cougar and a deer. Yeah, just thought I'd point that out. I would like to thank the SBCSPCA for not going with a cull and rather a spay program. Like they say, they, they killed how many in Oak Bay and the majority of that meat went to the landfill. It didn't go to First Nations, it went to the landfill. What good was that? It didn't feed anybody except the bear and the cougars at the landfill. And also my interaction with Wildarc hasn't been favorable. You know, I phoned, mama deer has been killed by a car, there's two fawns, what do I do? Well, keep an eye on them and if there's suffering, call the RCMP to euthanize them. Other words, shoot them. And then another question for SBCSPCA is I'd like to know if the rabbits culled under the acceptable practices by the owner of the Alternative Wildlife Solutions who is employed as the handyman at Wildarc, if that, if those culled rabbits are going for feed for the birds of prey and the raptors? That's a question I do have. And, you know, if they're using the culled rabbits, are they going to use the euthanized cats and dogs? Just a question. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we'll have one more and then into BC Transit.
Margarita Dominguez, 2075 Otter Point Road. I am completely opposed to killing the deer. I think that there should be other methods before employed like putting barriers in weapons pit and in places where the deer cross more frequently. Perhaps a group of volunteers with conservation officers, we can move some of the deers away from here, from the places where there are more traffic of the deer. I think so that we are, Oak Bay is a little lot. There is not too many people. I was there on the weekend and we rarely see deer. People just point when they see a deer, oh, look at here! And she's a baby deer, which I think so that we are going too fast here and killing everything. I really appreciate the presentation of Wildarc, but I can only see lately cooling and control rabbit and control this and it just come here to instate policies and work more bylaws and more things affecting people, affecting elders that they have lived here for years and they're used to certain methods. And my question is, we know that every box of rats or mice or quails or rabbits that Wildarc buys is from $80 to $150 if I'm not wrong. And my question is, we cull so much, my question direct to you is, how can we be sure?
Uh, Ms. Amigas, please direct your questions.
Okay. As animal rescues, that all the hundreds of animals, the cats and dogs and rabbits killed by the SPCA all year long, they are not used to feed Wildarc animals? That is my question, please. We want to be sure of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can have my card, I'll make you sure.
No, I would like a public, a public explanation, please.
Yeah, and here's my card and you can email me and I'll get our CEO to put that back. I didn't have my card.
Can I have your card as well?
Yeah, absolutely. No problem, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Jeff Bateman, 7083 Briarwood Place. I'm part of an organization here, newly formed organization here in town called Wildwise Suk. And Deb Reed would have been up here in a heartbeat to add her piece around this. The subject tonight is, is urban deer and how we can control these. It's, it's paradoxical there. We live in a, a culture that's a little out of balance. And so there's practical solutions as Counselor, former Counselor Dumont and Ellen were saying, and we have to find a fresh balance. So it sounds like there's some very practical ideas are being brought forward by the SPCA based on other communities. So let's hope, I don't know what the hard ask was from the SPCA for this group tonight, but hopefully it could work through Wildwise Suk in some capacity. Ebony, Acting Mayor Loggins is also on that, the guiding committee along with Laura Hooper. And great things happening there in terms of bear awareness and as the campaign unfolds, deer awareness as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you're willing, Dr. Dubois, you are able to come back to the mic and address the questions now if you'd like. And if you don't, that's not a problem, we can move forward. I've given my card. Okay, perfect. This session tonight was on urban deer, if anyone wants to call and try to follow.
No, but it's also about the cooling, cool, cool the animals and that's the answer that as an animal rescue, I would.
All right, we will move forward then with the next presentation. So I'd like to welcome BC Transit here tonight. We have Tanya Wegwetz, the manager of transit planning, and also James Wadsworth, who is a senior planner. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. And we're, we're out here at invitation from the mayor from a letter that we got, so we thought we'd just give you a little overview of the, the transit system. And we're going to, to go to the next slide. And so they outlined tonight is, is an overview of the transit system, a bit about the existing transit service in Suk, the long-term transit future plan, some regional initiatives we're working on, and then some time for question and answers. Just a few facts here, the Victoria Regional Transit System is the second largest in BC. We carry over 100,000 passengers a day, about six and a half percent of all trips in the region, whether that's car, walking, or bike, or bus, or by bus. We run the fixed route system and we also run the handy dart system. Because we're a shared service model under the Crown Corporation, we're able to provide, carry more people at a lower cost per hour than many of our Canadian, Canadian peers. We have 281 buses in our system, we have 54 in our handy dart system, and we have what we call about 930,000 service hours. And what does that translate into? It's 550 operators, 100 mechanics. We have all the people that help get the buses on the road too. We've got 56 routes in the region and about 2,300 bus stops. Generally, we run from seven till 12 on Friday nights, we run, and Saturday nights, we run a bit later until 2:00 AM in the morning. And we also, for governance, we have the Victoria Regional Transit System. They're the ones that are responsible for approving all the routes locally, the service levels, budget fares and taxation. It was established under the BC Transit Act. It's comprised of seven elected local officials that are appointed by the provincial government. The chair is also appointed by the, the minister. We, BC Transit staff are the ones who are their resources and help contract, provide, to provide service. And just a little bit of an update, the commission members have asked to have one additional member added to the west shore, so they've made, they've sent a letter to the provincial government making that request. So it's possible that in the near future, Suk may be asked to send the mayor or counselor to be part of the transit commission. We'll go to the next slide. And then, you know, all the time, we're, we're always talking and engaging with our customers. We, when we're looking at new services, we're doing open houses, sometimes we're doing workshops, we're always doing surveys onboard to refine and plan our service. We do a telephone survey and ask people their general attitudes and, and what levels of use they have for transit in the region. We also send an annual survey out to all our local government partners to ask how we're doing it and what things we can be doing better. We hear from, at the commission level, we hear from the public through letters and emails and delegations can, can come and talk. and delegations can, can come and talk to the commission. We also have customer information, where we receive complaints and commendations. We, we have a website with a trip planner on it now, so you can plan, plan your trip. We, we're on Facebook and Twitter. We also work very closely with municipal governments. You know, because the key to, key to good transit is, is having land use that supports it. They go, they go together. We, we work with participating local plans, like the CRD, Regional Sustainability Strategy, the Transportation Plan, where we'll often provide advice on OCPs and transportation plans and participate in workshops and processes that local communities have. Pedestrian cycling corridor plans, we look at, we'll, we'll work with local government to develop area transit plans. Your, your planning department is always sending us development referrals that we can comment on to, to, to suggest how, you know, if there's a new bus stop in front of a, a property, you know, how it could be improved. And, and again, we're always working with local governments, like Elizabeth here in engineering. And we come out here and do things like presentations, too, and meet with groups all the time. And now, here's a little bit about our existing Sook services. Many of you might know, we have the sixty-one Sook that goes in and out of town, connects to downtown Victoria and the West Shore. We also have two community bus routes out here with a smaller bus. The Route sixty-three Otter Point and the sixty-four East Sook. They serve Otter Point Road, East Sook, Sun River, and Kemp Lake. Now, just for a couple of fun facts. In the morning, about fifteen percent on average are traveling from Sook to other parts of the region by transit. So, that's a, that's a fair chunk of, of all the, the trips that, that happen regionally. We don't do as well during the middle of the day, one percent compared to other parts of the region. But it's obviously somewhere we could, we could try to improve things. In terms of transit service coverage, here is a population density map that has the road network on it. In blue is where the transit network, and it's hard to see here, but there's a, a walking buffer of about five minutes around that. So, most people within Sook and, and the Otter Point area and East Sook are within walking distance of, of transit services. Here's a little bit more information on the sixty-one Sook, how many trips it has per service day. We carry about sixteen hundred people by bus on weekdays, which is a pretty good number. There's a shot also of the routing in the Sook area. And, and the main transit, the busiest transit stops are, are in the town center. And regional trips come in from the West Shore in Victoria to there, drop many people off, and then circulate through Otter Point and Grant Road and West Coast back in, into town, and then wait there to get back on time and head back into town. Now, this route functions like a regional connector, but it also circulates through some of the, the key population areas in Sook to act as a local shutter, a local, local shuttle. It, it helps seniors who, who might be wanting to shop get into and out of town where, where the grocery stores are located. And here's a, a shot of our, our bus stop activity. You can see at Evergreen Mall there and the Village Foods Market, those are where the two busiest stops are. And it's about three hundred people a day, almost, use the stops at those locations. And if you look at some of the other stops on West Coast Road and Otter Point, the, the ridership levels are a lot there. So, there's a lot of focus on, on that area of town. And this is the Otter Point route. It goes all the way to Otter Point Road and down Kemp Lake and back into Sook and, and down to Whiffen Spit Road there. It is a community bus route, and you can see that it only carries twenty-eight passengers a day. It does, only does four trips. But in the num, you know, for the number of trips, you know, seven people a trip for four trips, that's, that's not too bad for a community bus-sized vehicle. And then the other route we have is the East Sook route. It serves Sun River, Kel Tassen, and all the way out East Sook Road and comes back into town. It does eight trips a day and carries about seventy-two people. There's a, a shot of our park and ride. That one's kind of neat, because someone's gone and, and painted the bike lockers there with some Sook shots and, and a double decker. Here is our park and ride. Now, this has been here since two thousand and nine. It's quite successful. They're getting close to, to full on most weekday mornings. And then, the next slide is, here's a couple of recent service changes that we've made out in Sook. We did do some consultation out here earlier, earlier on that I'll tell you about. But one of the things people were asking for was more late-night service on Saturdays. So, we were able to add one more last trip that comes to and from town around midnight on Saturdays. I think it was appreciated by some of the younger people who like to get back and forth. And just this, on June twenty-ninth, we've added a stop in Sea Park. It was a request from the facilities people out there that they thought it would be better to have the bus stop in the complex. And so, we've moved the stops off the road, and now we're circulating through the site. And I think that was appreciated by quite a few people. And through our bus shelter program, that I'll talk a bit about more on another slide, we've added five shelters over the last few years out here. And I know in the letter, there was a request to talk about the transit future plan. About, in two thousand and ten, eleven, we did a twenty-five-year transit strategy for the region. It was, the intent of it was to align with municipal transportation and land use plans. So, we did a lot of local consultation with our municipal partners back then. It sets some ridership targets that align with the regional growth strategy for transit and for the provincial transit plan. So, we're trying to double, double ridership over the next twenty-five years. And it identifies a bunch of future strategic priorities for the region, and the infrastructure needed to, needed to make, deliver the service that people are asking for. Now, we went out, and this plan was endorsed by the transit commission members and all the local governments. We came out here and, and showed the council at the time, the transit network for Sook and some of the infrastructure things that had been asked for, and those are identified in the plan. When we, when we go to, to making a plan like this, we always look at, at where are people traveling to? And so, we got some really neat origin destination data from, from the CRD on, on where people are moving in, in Sook. And, and you can see that, you know, there are many trips out to Victoria and Sanich and Callwood, about twenty percent of trips. But most importantly, there's sixty-five percent of people are just moving within their community. So, when we're thinking of the future network out here, I think we, we have a good regional connection right now, and you can see that that's doing pretty well. But it looks like there's, the opportunity is, how can we improve the local transit network? How can we move people within town and the town center? And, and again, here's the transit future plan strategy was, was not just running buses like we do now, but developing layers of service that are appropriate for the different needs of the community. So, establishing rapid transit links between the West Shore and downtown Victoria, out to the ferries and, and to the university, and, and identifying a number of key urban corridors that we could run frequent transit services on. And then, and then tailoring local transit services to meet local community needs. And, and again, the strategy is, is to, is to design the system to get us to a twelve percent, twelve percent mode share, doubling the existing ridership. And so, what have we done to implement the transit future plan so far? We, we've done a rapid transit project, which gives us a very long-term idea of what the alignment for rapid transit would be and what the costs are associated with, with LRT. But in terms of affordability, it's probably not realistic right now with other priorities, with sewage in the, in the, in the region. So, to move forward, we, we've looked at a transit priority project where we can look at more bus lanes to help build that market for rapid transit. We'll talk a bit more about that. We've done a campus transit plan where we've expanded the UVIC Transit Exchange. One of the first things you need to do before you add service is you have to have somewhere to put the buses. We're looking at a transit hub at Uptown in the future. And another thing that we need to support running more, a lot more buses is there's only room for twelve more buses in our, in our yards. So, if we need to add a hundred buses in the future, which I, I'm pretty sure we do, we're gonna need a third operating center to do that. And the other thing that you've done, if we, if you're making, looking at all these long-term investments, you better make sure that you're using your existing resources as well as you can. So, as part of this, we've done a performance and service review. And this is, you know, looking at how can we best use the resources we can? How can we make sure that we're covering all the areas that we need to do, but focusing where there's ridership? And, and in doing that, part of that, we, we went out and asked the public what their priorities were on bus, on shorter-term bus service improvement. So, we were out here in, in Sook with our Transit Future Bus sometime, I think in two thousand and thirteen, to ask, ask people what their priorities were out here. We did, we did a workshop where we invited many municipal staff from around the region to help us also identify priorities. And, and in Sook, the, the strategies we're, we're looking at, it's a bit hard to see on, on this map, but we'd like to improve the local bus network over the next few years. And we've scheduled a number of local service area plans across the region. And in twen, in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we like to do a Sook local area plan. So, that's to, you know, where do, what areas do we need to serve? What development is changing? And if we're doing more community buses, what should the, the network be? And how should we lay out those priorities in the future? Because right now, you've got one community bus that circulates through a couple of routes. I, I can see, you know, realistically, over the next twenty years, you're probably gonna get up to three or four smaller buses that circulate and meet the, the regional bus that takes people into, into town. And, and so, part of that, we'd like to look at the infrastructure, too. And, and in the transit future plan, we, we know there was need for another park and ride farther out West Coast Road. We know that if we're gonna do a small bus network, that we need to establish a new transit exchange, which we haven't done, identified yet. So, you know, as the town center develops, you know what your plans are. It'd be great to work with your staff to look at the options for an appropriate place to have a transit exchange that, that aligns with community development and takes people where they want to go. And, and in terms of regional initiatives, we've been working on this transit priority study where we've identified the key corridors where we'd like to have bus lanes or interventions at the intersections to get the buses out of congestion. Because, you know, many people who live out here know how frustrating it can be to be in all the traffic along Highway One. The Ministry of Transportation is looking at some solutions for, for Highway One, and we're working with the local governments on Island Highway, on Douglas and Mackenzie. And we have made some, we have made some changes on Douglas Street, I think, on our next slide. South of Hillside, we have bus lanes in both directions now. We didn't remove any traffic lanes to achieve that. We're, in the next month or so, we're gonna be opening a northbound lane from Hillside Mall up to Tolme. And so, that takes us right up to the, the ministry's right-of-way. And that puts the pressure to start to look at a third phase up to, up to Uptown and hopefully out the, out the highway. So, we're busy, we're busy implementing that right now. And the other thing that we're, we're doing is we have a bus shelter program. I like to remind councils about that. One of the things that we've heard from our customers is, is they have a, a clear desire for improvements to the, the bus stops. And, and we can help through our Transit Shelter Program with the commission. They, the Transit Commission will fund, a hundred percent fund the cost of a bus shelter if the municipality can, you know, equip the sidewalk with the appropriate concrete. And we're coming out to talk to all of, all of our engineering colleagues, establishing a priority list for each municipality. And so, we'll, we'll be contacting your engineering department soon to talk about what, what is the list of, of shelters we'd like to do. We've done five right now, but I'd like to do fifteen if we can. And so, that's all I have to say. And now, we'll open the floor, then I can answer your questions. There's, there's a couple on governance, if you have them, that Tanya probably could do.
Great, thank you, Councillor Casper.
Yeah, thank you very much. Is it possible for you to track the, the peak hours for sixty-one and sixty-one X? Because I know that you lumped everything together, and you came up with your, your average daily based on the sixty-three trips per day. But I think, you know, what we're more concerned about is the peak hour travel for those two runs. And, you know, I'm gonna speak for, like, my wife and thousands of other people who commute, that by, by, by having the sixty-one X, which is the non-stop version and goes right downtown, is, is a godsend. And if there's any even, even consideration of, of having another or having that type of bus stop at another exchange and have everybody jump off when you decide to do these, these bus lanes, will be a deterrent. Huge deterrent. Time is inconvenience, and the, you know, the public, look at it this way. If it's not convenient, I'll drive. If I'm gonna put up with delay and headaches, I'll drive. Because they'd sooner have the creature comforts as opposed to the headache and the hassle. Now, I applaud you on your service, but I'm gonna tell you a little story that I experienced on Saturday night. We, we, we're trying to do the good thing. We're going to a fundraiser, trying to be responsible. So, we decided to take the bus. And we walked down to the bus stop. We're not even fifty feet from the bus stop. The bus comes eight minutes earlier than the program states. And so, I look at that, and I say to myself, okay, which, which, which part of the discussion am I missing? You should have heard my wife's comments. I can't even repeat them. And, you know, and she's a very strong supporter of the system and has been for a number of years. But I think she, she would probably, you know, be upset with me if I didn't mention it. And, and I'm not being apologetic for, for mentioning it, because I think you have to hear some of the good news and some of the bad news. And, you know, we ended up having to phone a taxi from a bus stop. By the time we got up there, we saw the bus that drove by, and it said, "Not in service." And that bus was gonna go sit in front of the village food store for a break or go back home to Langford, because it was just after six o'clock. So, you know, to me, that's not service to the public. And, and we timed it very carefully. We knew when it was gonna get to seventeen, because that's what the schedule said. We knew the fact that when you get to Seventeen Mile, you have to sit there if you go, if you arrive early. That's the routine with that bus. So, I just thought you should hear that. Now, I applaud your efforts on these shelters, because we, we've been spending a fortune on these shelters. Our local tax dollars, not only do we help fund transit by the tax levy, we're also using money to do these little minor capital things. But you know what? Our municipality gets no credit whatsoever. We see BC Transit's name on the shelter, but we don't see anything about the District of Sook. And I think that's an important message that should happen in all communities, that it's not just BC Transit that is providing the shelter. It's local tax dollars that are also providing that shelter. So, I, I would hope that, that through your public relations department and goodwill, that we could actually try to get something like that in the mix, so that if it is a partnership, it truly is demonstrated as a partnership. In regard to the, the, and I don't mean to be too long, but as my last point is this. In regard to a future kind of holding area or an exchange area, I, I think it's important to establish it with, with a public process. And, 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 you know, the reason why the mayor wrote the letter in the first instance was because of some of the problems that we'd encountered in regard to our downtown capital project. And, and it was implied to us that it was transit who was pushing the need for expanded bus bay area in the town center. And, and so, we, we were a little alarmed about that, because it was gonna have a potential impact on one of our businesses in Sook. And we did not support that. Our council was united in that position, and everybody backed off. And that's why the letter was written in the first instance. So, so I think it's critical that before any dialogue occurs, that we have community consultation just like this. In many respects, this is probably long overdue. So, I, I just wanna thank you for coming out, and thank you for your indulgence.
Mayor Tate?
Great, thank you very much for the presentation today. It's, it's good to see you out here. And as Councillor Casper said, yes, as we were talking about our town, town center infrastructure plans, it was exactly that. We was, we were made aware that there was a desire to have a two-bus, two-bus rest stop in the middle of town. And so, we appreciate the need, and there is a need for a town center bus stop, but not particularly a rest station when we're going through so much effort to beautify the town core when we have a park. When we're going through so much effort to beautify the town core, when we have a park and ride sitting, um, you know, empty west of town. And so that's, that is what triggered the letter and just to reiterate that council doesn't want a rest station in our town. We've waited far too long to have a vibrant town center come to play here. And then also to work to find a, a more appropriate, um, rest stop on another transit exchange on the west, on West Coast Road, as you alluded to. So we look forward to working with you in the medium term on, on finding that location. And also I'm glad to see that there is the 2016, 17 Sook Local Area Plan, um, in terms of improvements to the community buses. Cause what I see there is that for commuters, the schedule just doesn't work. Um, I live in Sun River. Um, I used to walk to the bus. It's about a 20-minute walk, if not a little bit longer than that. Uh, and so when you see the stops go in, everyone was like, oh, that's great. We can take the bus down. Well, it, it comes at 10 after eight. Most people like to be downtown at eight. So it just doesn't work. But if you're milling around within Sook, then that's great. But it's just getting that connection back home again. So a lot of times people will take it into town, but then they got to flag a taxi to get back again. Um, in terms of the, um, the current situation, what I've seen happen in the core is that a lot of people use the Evergreen Mall and the Village Food parking lots as a park and ride. And so they'll park, get on the bus and then go from there. And then the, I go buy the park and ride and it's pretty much half empty. And so that is a challenge for those businesses that are trying to have parking for their actual customers there. So that's, that's great. I appreciate your time and, and coming out here today. And we are, today was a big day in Sook because we did our groundbreaking ceremony for the town center plan. So it's going to be very busy over the next couple of months. But in terms of the Sook Local Area Plan, as you move into that, what, what would that look like? What is the process in terms of unrolling that?
A, a process for a local area plan would be looking at first getting all the background data together. You know, what are the existing services doing? How do they function? What are the issues with them? And then it's going out and doing problem definition, speaking with your, your staff, maybe coming to council, doing a presentation to get your ideas, talking to the public for one round. And then once we've heard, everybody is coming back with some, you know, short-term solutions and then some longer-term solutions.
Okay. And maybe, um, I don't know if it's possible if you did like an open house on the 61 because then all the riders, you'd have an hour of their attention. They'd give you all the feedback.
Yeah, certainly we, we do surveys and, and, and make sure we talk to our riders.
Sure. No, that's great.
And we know that we get the best results with, with Transit in terms of ridership. When the, uh, Transit is, is linked with, with land use, connecting people to where they want to go. Cause, you know, the, the reason some of the bus stops are busier than others is because they're using them to go shopping or, or, or use community services.
Um, just one final note, um, cause I think having used Transit in the peak hours, it, it works great. You know, the, the buses come regularly. You can time them. Even if you miss one, the next one's coming. The feedback I've had for the daytime use is that the trip is just a bit too long. And so for seniors or anyone going to a medical appointment, the 61 then converts to the 50. So then it does the Langford run before it connects downtown. And then often if you're going to Jubilee, then you have to make a connection and the timing doesn't always work out. So sometimes an hour and a half bouncing around on a bus is just a really long time. So then people will engage a volunteer driver or just drive to medical appointments. And I've just noticed that with the 6150, it, it makes for a longer, a really long bus ride home. Well, yeah.
We, we try to make the best use of the resources we can and balance, balance everything out with the funding and, and keeping taxes at, at a reasonable level. But I, I can promise you that, that the 61X will, will always take people into town unless they're getting on, on light rail. And hopefully we can do it with bus lanes because that's going to solve a lot of the travel time, uh, issues. And what we've seen in, in other communities that have done bus lanes, uh, they get those higher mode shares that we're, we're looking for. And we know that's the number one strategic thing we can do is, is get Transit travel times, uh, the same or faster than by auto. We know we're going to get, uh, more riders.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Sorry about that.
I'd just like to touch on what Mayor Tate said as well, uh, for the needs of seniors heading downtown. And I've also been found that the needs of seniors and youth are very similar. And one thing I'd like to mention as well is that the high school in town has now made a partnership with Camosin so that all of their graduating students, um, almost all of them have credits from Camosin as they graduate. And also anyone under 19 is registered at Camosin, uh, or can be registered at Camosin, um, heading into their graduating year. The bus ride from here to Interurban is 1.5 hours one way. Uh, are there any plans to improve that?
So as, as we've done, uh, our planning, a local area plan for, for Sook, we've just completed one for the West Shore. And one of the priorities that was clear was, was having a, a route that went from the main transit hub in Langford all the way to, to Interurban. Cause right now it, it kind of peters out at the hospital or sometimes, uh, the Colwood Exchange. So having all the buses in one locations and having a, a direct shot there was, was a high priority. Also having a, having a bus that went from there into Dockyard was, uh, another priority.
Excellent.
We, we just need provincial funding, uh, to do those, those things and a little bit of local funding too. Doesn't help. Doesn't hurt.
My Counselor Pearson.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation tonight. And, um, not being much of an expert, having Community Victoria for 30 years and never taken the bus. Well, all, maybe two times when I left my car town, but, um, um, the, the, there was some, there's an interesting stat on there that was, uh, for me was that you said 60% of the ridership, ridership was in Sook, Sook to Sook?
No, no. 65% of trips that come-
Oh, 65% of trips. Okay.
Occur in your community. And so if we're trying to mirror trips and transit service levels, we're, we're missing the local, local service is the big gap that we need to look at improving.
Yeah. Um, and I had the opportunity, um, um, last term to attend the, the dean of the university, uh, presentation to all the mayors and councils in the Western communities. And he said, you know, that Langford, Colwood was, was close but too far again. And when, and Transit was one of those issues. So I'm glad to hear that, uh, our, the acting mayor's, uh, comments about, uh, improving that and your, your follow-up on that too. So.
With the, the U-Pass program that she, she noted, that one of the things they, they have a, uh, a, a pass that goes with their semester fees. And 28% of people who go to the universities and colleges are using Transit. So we're establishing good, good, uh, travel or transit patterns early on and they're really using it well.
Well, it was, was, was economically viable because the, the closer you got to live to the university, the more expensive it was for students. So there's some, some of the economic, you know, residences, like secondary suites, et cetera, in the Western communities would be a lot more affordable to students. So, but it has to be coupled with good transportation.
With good transit service. So that's why it's important land use and Transit go together.
Perfect. Thank you.
Was that it? No, you're good. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the committee? All right. I'll open it up to the floor then, just state your name for the record. And, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Wadsworth for your presentation.
Ron Dumont, 7094 West Coast Road. One of the things I didn't see on the whole chart is no surface rides. Do you keep track of no surface hours?
I'll just ask Mr. Dumont that you directed the questions to the chair.
Know when your bus is running empty to Sook and back to Sook. We're putting double mileage on those double deckers. If we had a, a repair service in Sook, there would be no need for those buses to go all the way back to Langford or to the depot and then come back to Sook the next morning. And if you, I don't see that on yours. How many, and it's not only in Sook. I see on Interurban Road, I see buses, no service, no service, no service going out towards West Sanich Road. And I don't know where they're going, but they're empty. So that's one of the things that I think you should keep track of when you're going to put a new service area, possibly at uptown, maybe a very expensive place to put a service area, very hard to get at, no place for people to park. So I think that you should be keeping track of the non-service. Because those double deckers, I, I watched them coming in from town, six and seven in the mornings, coming to Sook. And then I see the same thing going back. They don't take anybody back with them, even if you're standing at the side of the road. Thank you.
Margarita Dominguez, 2075 Other Point Road. In the year 1999, I presented the 750 signatures to bring the bus back to, bring the bikes to Kemp Lake. And, but the bus in needs is a, perhaps you can change the one from 8:30 in the morning and put it before that because the children cannot use that bus, which means there are a lot of teenagers living in that area and they have to walk all Other Point on West Coast. It's really, really sad. If you can perhaps change the button from 8:30 to, uh, 7 o'clock or 7:30 will be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Fran Ash 2387, French Road North. Um, I figure I'm an expert on Transit. I rode the bus from 1979 to 2010. 1979, I don't, I don't remember if we had two buses or four buses. And it's like, um, him, Casper, said that, no, we used to have, the 61 was, it was a, a highway bus with reclining seats and lights and the whole bit. So we'd take our bus into Western Exchange, have to get off, stand in the rain or the wind, the hail, whatever, for a number 50. So then we all gang together and got after Steve Harvey and Chris Ford and other people and had that to the way, hey, why do we have to get off the bus? So they changed it. And coming back, i- i- it's the same thing. You, you, people coming to Sook are standing on a dangerous highway. And you get to Colwood, half the people get off. So I think in peak hours, every 61 should be express. It should not go up the Old Bay Highway. It should be direct Sook or Victoria to Sook. And for people that live in the outlaying areas, I remember Kemp Lake, the reason that route was stopped was because of the owners of the park, the Mobile Home Park at Kemp Lake. They were complaining that the bus was ruining their driveway. So they stopped the bus from going, not Transit. And then as Rick said, or somebody said, I think it was Mayor Tate, that I went to Jubilee Hospital for an appointment and I thought, oh, I'm going to drive. It's going, I'm going to find, I have to find parking. It's expensive. I'm going to take the bus. Fine. It took me an hour and a half to get to Royal Jubilee because when I got off the Sook bus, the number 14 was leaving. I had to wait. Coming home took me four hours. Because I left the hospital, the bus went by. Okay, there's another one. 10 minutes? No, it was 20 minutes. So I get off at, uh, the bay, the old bay, and it was, okay, there's a bus in 20 minutes. Oh, here's a Sook bus. Hello? He was in the wrong lane. He couldn't pull over. It took me four hours, which on an hour and a half or two hours, yeah, but not when this guy went. Cause he was not in the right lane. So, you know, you have to, you have to. Another thing, the people that live in the out, if they have a public hearing, you have to go to it. I went to every one. I was a stalker. Steve Harvey and, and Chris Ford, like, we'd have dinner together because they knew I was going to be at the meeting. I stalked them. And then I think it was 1992, we wanted a bus leaving Sook to get us into Victoria at 7 o'clock AM. And Steve Harvey called it a petition. We called it a survey. But they listened. Except he put on a, a checker on a long weekend. I think it was May 24th weekend, he put the bus on for a trial. On the long weekend, there was eight people on the bus. And it's like, well, no, this was wrong. We have, the next time it was 27 people and the next time. You have to work with them and you have to harass and stalk them. You don't take no for an answer. They listened eventually. Thank you.
We'll take your advice under consideration. All right. Uh, we'll move into the next item, which is the Sook River Road Task Force update. Is that, should I direct that to you, Mr. Howie?
Sure. Thank you, Acting Mayor. I'll, uh, I'll introduce the item. And, uh, I know Counselor Pearson and Counselor Ray were council's representatives on a, uh, a group that got together the evening of, uh, June 25th with two members from the, uh, Horseshoe Club and two members from the Community Association and one member of district staff. And Brent was our member of district staff. And so he's here if you need any information from him about that meeting. So, uh, there is a, uh, a report on the agenda, page 17. And there's an attached, uh, uh, drawing showing the, the results of that meeting. Very quick task force meeting. And, uh, so the, the decision that came out of that, coming back with a recommendation to this committee was that the horseshoe pitch moved really in rough terms up to the, uh, the northern corner of the district's property on Sook River Road from its present location, uh, which is basically in the middle of that piece of property. And that, uh, the committee consider the, uh, the extension or, or rather the connection with the Galloping Goose Trail that is also part of this discussion. Go along the outside of, uh, that facility and, and along the riverbank, coming back up, on, at a, at a point on Sook River Road to tie into, uh, the, the existing system going across the bridge. And so, uh, perhaps Counselor Pearson, as the city's representative or the district's representative there, would like to make some comments. And then we have received, uh, from the Horseshoe Club this evening, a, um, a sketch of what they think the, uh, the, well, what, they've looked at the contours on the property that was suggested coming out of, uh, of the meeting the other night. This is the, the north, the northern corner of the property. And they're pointing out, uh, some of the difficulties of that, given the elevation and the, uh, the levels of the bank as it drops off, uh, roughly 60 feet into the property. So with that, I, uh, turn it back over to council, or to the committee rather, for discussion.
Counselor Pearson?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howie. And, uh, first of all, I want to open up by, um, I really appreciated going down there and walking the property with, uh, Counselor Ray, myself and members of the Community Association and, uh, Mr. Blackall and the members of the, the Horseshoe Club. So, uh, for the people that took their time out of their, their night last week to, to go down there and do that, I do appreciate it. And I do appreciate that there was, uh, some, some good candid discussion around, um, potentially resolving some of the, the conflicts that, that obviously are out there or that we've interpreted or, or we've come across. So, uh, there was a, there was a general discussion around looking at the overall site in, in combination of, of all the, of all the, the, the three, uh, components of it. So, um, obviously one of the, you know, the, the biggest, the biggest hurdles to us politically and, and, and I think, um, visibly was, was, was the location of, of the proposed horseshoe pitch. From a, from a user point of view, from the Community Association and the people, uh, you know, if we get the all-weather field, which is still there, and even without the all-weather field, um, it's a, it's kind of a, a negative impact to the community at large to, 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 to reduce that parking, which looks like obvious parking for a lot of reasons. And, and again, there's, there's still some more questions around the, you know, the ALR land and things like that that need to be answered. So, um, the, the general discussion ended up with all of us, um, coming to a, to, to considering, and that's all it was, was considering that the horseshoe pitch, in exchange for, uh, for us to, to get that and secure that parking, was to go to the northern end of the property and try to locate the, the horseshoe pitch up there. With the districts, um, uh, and our role as, as council members, and I'll put this out there for discussion because some of you know a little bit about it, was that in exchange to get that parking secured and improved in that area, was to exchange the- that parking secured and improved in that area, was to exchange the similar amount of land that the Horseshoe Club would require to get started. They, they taught, we talked about, you know, their future expansion, their current use, the current size, and with the, with the understanding is that if they needed more space, they could move towards that, that bank that's drawn on this, this map. I guess that's a way to sum it up. Does that kind of sound right, Brent? Jump in anywhere you want to help me. So what was good about the meeting is we also had, you know, some, some expertise there from the Horseshoe Club, as well as we had some construction expertise. One of the Community Association members is, is familiar with construction and, and, well, actually there's two of them that are, you know, fairly experienced in land moving and et cetera, et cetera. So they think that, that, that it's doable from a construction point of view and I see the map looks like it's challenged. So one of the things that we need to do is identify exactly where that property line is between the Brownie Camp and our Community Association. And I think that needs to be done by a survey and I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of give you some bullet points, what I think for the committee to consider is, we need to identify where the end of that property is very clearly. And then we need to consider what the horseshoe pitch needs now and whether the future expansion is actually possible. It's gonna require some land clearing, some bush clearing and, and, and some tree cutting, which I think is, is inevitable when you, you're gonna start developing that, that land. So that's sort of it in a, in a high level nutshell with, with the Community Association and the Horseshoe Club. The second part, which is the third use, is the bicycle trail or the expansion of the bicycle trail through that property. And if you see kind of on the map that we've got there, it, it's, it looks like it can work by that red dotted line being below everything in the use and it actually would be, in my opinion, it'd actually be quite attractive as a bicycle trail to go to the back of the property on the riverside, I call it the back, towards Suk River. So it would kind of swoop down using the natural contours of the land and then swoop back up. That's not unlike many bicycle trails that are around the Capital Regional District where the, the hills would go down a little bit and then back up, it would be actually quite pleasant. So, and at the same time, I think we could get some advantage with some tree clearing and overlook the flats and, and have a real nice view corridor down to, towards Suk River. So I think there's some, from that initial meeting, I think there's some, there was some hope from, from Council Ray and myself that, that there's potential that we can work this. Now, I see that there's some challenges with this map here. So again, I think there's some first steps that I would like to recommend to, to the committee of the whole, is that we consider land clearing because I think that the horseshoe pitch in, in, in their approach to this has done some work in kind and some has been funded. Not sure exactly where all the money came from. So I would, I would like to, the council to consider exchange of a usable area, usable surface areas, which means some tree clearing and some, some land flattening and things like that. So that's it from me. Brent, Mr.?
Yes, that, the summary sounds like the way I understood the, the meeting went and how we have it documented in the report. And we've laid out in the report the next steps that, that we also think that need to occur with the ALC and, and also checking with the ministry about the, the grant that we have for this bike trail, whether it's, it's still doable, these changes, as long as it doesn't impact any of the eligibility.
And I guess through the chair to you, I'd like to hear from the other councillors. I, I've summed it up quickly and I think that Mr. Blackall and, and myself and Kerry are, you know, probably have, that, that's, that's pretty accurate, but there is some next step, steps, some next technical steps, you know? I'd like to know from this committee where we're at in the application to the ALC as far as, as having that removed, because that was, I think we, we passed that motion at the last meeting. Are we in that process, Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
One other thing, if I, I'm not sure if, now's the time to introduce it or later, but the other underlying question here is whether or not to award the contract to do the survey work. That, that was to include both the, the survey for the trail, but more particularly to look at options for improving the parking, which again requires the survey. We've done a bit of, and it depends really to, to what level you want to go with a survey to answer a question. We've, we've talked to a survey firm and you could do a, well, let's go out there and see what we can find kind of survey, which means try to find some, some existing pins and then from that extrapolate where boundaries might be and place those on, on a map for council to consider. The next step is to go to a preliminary survey. And the last step is to go to a full blown survey. Now, the difference in cost between those and the length of time it takes to do them are, is significant. The, the, let's go take a look and see what we can find is, is an hourly rate kind of survey and who knows what that might be, but it'll probably be under, under four or five thousand dollars. The next step is the preliminary survey, which could run anywhere from seven to eight thousand dollars. And the final survey, which is actually recommended in the contract, is about between seventeen and nineteen thousand, which you would eventually need in any event. Now, to, to do that work, even to do the preliminary survey, the estimate of time is about four weeks. So I, I just want to mention all that to the committee because I think that has, has two bearings. Number one, what the cost might be to provide enough information for council to be comfortable with the, with the location and the amount of time involved. We, we have several outstanding things that, that have to be done around that trail. One is nail down the, the ALC and I don't think that will take a long time. A month though to look at developing the full survey before anything else starts, like design and that sort of thing, starts to bump us into the other end of it, which is February to have this work done. So I did, I just wanted to lay that out there.
So, so Mr. Howie, yeah, you've hit some valid points and I think there's some critical pieces in there, through the chair to Mr. Howie, that, that need to be done. I think there's a couple of simple things that probably could take care of answering some questions if we go forward. And I really think that the determination of that line on the northern piece of property, and I'll say it between our property and the Brownie Camp, I, I think if we establish that one line of where that actually physically is, that would give us some comfort as far as measurement, you know? I mean, this is on there, some of this is guesswork, but I, I think if you just shot one line, and I, and, you know, I'm not a super big expert on, on surveying, I had to pay for it a few times, but. So if we shot that one line and we actually had that ribbon off, in the straight line that goes from east to west, I think that would give us some real clarity of where we could probably possibly start at, some of that work, because considering that we also have to try and sneak the bike path in, somewhere in there between that line and the edge of the horseshoe pitch and, or it can come around the horseshoe pitch to the south side and go down and swoop over that hill, in my mind, but I'm not sure that, you know, I mean, there's some, there's some other construction experts that would work here. It's as long as we're behind the parking, I think was one of the criteria that I read in that bike. So anyways, that would be my, my request or, or would be to think is shoot that one line in so we know where it's at. Anyways, that's it. So I'll ask for other councillors.
All right, Councillor Casper?
So this may sound a little bit of a dumb question. Was there not a survey done or some establishment of where the property lines were when the district actually purchased this property? I, I'm assuming that if the district spent eight hundred thousand dollars on buying this property, that there would have been a survey done and, and laid out where the pins were to, to know what the boundaries are, because we're only going by some maps, but, you know, I've walked along the site and, and I have not seen any, any pins. So I don't know if somebody can answer that question, it might be a tough one.
Just off the top of my head, it is a tough one. It was purchased some time ago. So I'd have to go and check the records, but I'm not checking with engineering, I, unless I'm wrong, I don't believe we have any record of a survey.
No, the, the latest survey that, that I found was done in nineteen seventy six and as long as there's no changes to the property, there's no need to resurvey the property each time that a sale is done. In this case, the, the difference in cost is because of the new, and the new edict that came down from the B C Land Surveys. If you are to locate a line, you have to locate it properly, you have to find illegal pins and from nineteen seventy six and the part of that goes into the water, it just makes it that much more costly and difficult.
So, so, so if I may just carry on with that, I, I think Kevin Pearson brought up one valid point because there's an adjacent property owner. Well, no, and no, I mean, in regard to this survey, because we, we, the taxpayers own the property to the south and, and so there's no need to perhaps survey that per se, but we should get a survey in the northern part and, and maybe get something done along the Suk River Road portion so that we know exactly where the road right of way is. And then if there's gonna be parking and trail and, and the, the horseshoe pitch, then that's, that's a specified area that, that those things have to keep back from those lines. To me, that, those are the key things. And then I, I, I honestly feel that, that in this day and age, because we have design standards for a trail, this, this may not even have to be a full asphalt trail, it could be, you know, one of the compacted gravel trails that we have in our other parks. And, and the way a lot of these projects has been done is that it's basically design build and we rely on, you know, our, our good staff and, and the competence of contractors to actually walk the line or to pace it out where things can happen. And then once you've got a finished product, then you could actually do, if, if required, do a physical survey where that trail is located. To actually do it now, I, I, I think is probably too much guesswork, but, but I don't know, I'm inclined to at least take the initial stages and, and, and engage the use of a contractor to do that key work, so we know how far north we can go, where the trail can start at the northern end and, and where the parking area is designated off of the road frontage. That's what I think, what it's worth. Good points. Thank you.
Mayor Tate?
Okay, so just so I'm clear on this. So what you're suggesting then is to do a survey between, at the north, between our property and the, and the guide camp, okay? And then all the way down the length of it, the length of our property, nothing to do on the south though, where we hit the, the neighboring parcel below. Okay? So we just wanted to find, so basically there's two lines, the top and the side, all the way down and figure out the road right of way.
May I? The, that portion of the survey would be covered if you award the contract.
Right. But I feel that this-
And, and, and the reason I, I mean, that piece of property to the south has potential for parking as well, does it not? Or is that a separate issue? Okay. My, my only point being, I, well, I'm just really concerned about losing, if, if council eventually decides they want to go ahead with this, I'm worried about the timing on the seventy five thousand dollar grant. Now, we, we, as any other grant, you can, you can phone them up and say, hey, can we have an extra two or three months? It might not be a problem.
Mr. Pearson?
So again, I think that, and, and, you know, through the other, to the other members of council, through the chair, is that I think before we do anything, and, and I just keep saying this, before we do anything, if we could shoot that line on the north edge of the property and know exactly where that is, the road, the road right of way, I don't think we have to, I mean, we could guess where it is in or out. We know there's, there's a line down there. We know where the river is on the other side, so that's pretty well predetermined. If we know where that line is on the north side of the property and we flag it, then we can make a decision. I think under the, under your delegation of authority, I think it's gonna be fairly affordable to put one line in, like, I, I, I think you could go ahead and authorize that, to say, how much is the line from there to there? I don't think surveyors are gonna charge us an arm and a leg to, to find one leg. I mean, I know what they charge me, but, so I think it's, it's a few, and I'm gonna guess, it's less than, less than a few thousand dollars to shoot that one line in there and flag it so that we could actually physically go and see. I think we can't, we're putting too much of the cart before the horse. How, how long will it take us to get a survey? Like if tomorrow, if you phoned up and said, how long before you can get that?
Well, I could probably have it for the next meeting.
Right.
Which is the twentieth, right? Now, the, just for clarification.
Yes. That's me personally. I'm, I don't know the rest of the council has that thought.
Where exactly would you want that shot?
Between the Brownie Camp and our property from east to west, right across the top line of that property.
So just to establish the top property line of that?
Yes, and flag that, because that will say the corner of the property, because we'll know the corner, but it's gonna be the road approximately, then you'll know where the back of the property corner is. So, Mr. Blackall, does that sound logical to you? Because we don't know where that is and no one there could tell, you know, everybody guessed, you know, we had local experts that have lived in the community for sixty three years telling me it was lined up with this fence and that fence and this post and that telephone pole, but until I see a property line, I don't believe it. I've, too many times, we've, so, Mr. Blackall, your comments?
Yes, through the chair, I'd just like to add, I think we needed the, that for sure done. And then the clearing of the potential trail route, what used to be maybe an old logging road, to see if that's even a possibility too. There's kind of separate issues, but tied together.
Also with our fire warnings, when can we actually see the clearing of trees if we decide to make this a Joni Mitchell song?
Not, not really sure, other than to say it's a very good song. So I see three things that you need before you can make a decision. Number one, you need a survey of that particular line and we'll get that done to the best of a surveyor's ability. And the reason I say that, if they can't find anything, then they're gonna have to go by a bit of guessing by golly as well. Number two, you're gonna need some indication of the cost of clearing the land. And the third one was how you make the prop, how much it might cost to make the property usable as a horseshoe pitch.
Okay, so, okay, so I just want to be clear on this a hundred percent here because I, I don't want to be moving back each time, we kind of always want to find some traction moving forward here. I think there's a general consensus that there is a goal in mind to put in the trail, put in the horseshoes and put a, put in the parking. It's just a matter of where these various pieces are gonna land. The uncertain part is not, is the unknown, knowing exactly where the top of the line is. And then once we have that defined, then we can determine how far up or half, how far down the horseshoe pitch needs to go and where the trail can flow. Okay, so those are the basic three pieces, you know, so we'll, we'll get a resolution on that. As Mr. Howie outlined, the survey, the north line only, the cost of the clearing and the cost to have usable space for horseshoes. Now, at the same time, there are some other recommendations from staff that was noted in their report in terms of confirming with ALC that the new parking use can be permitted, the paved, that there was three, the three items here, paved multi-use trail will require formal application to the ALC, confirm with the ministry that the proposed change in trail route doesn't impact the grant eligibility. Are those three things that you also would like to have addressed at the same time of these other three? Or is it a matter of let's deal with the first three first and then wait and see what those results are before moving down that road? Because if it's determined that, okay, here's where the actual line is and this space does not work at all because of topography or whatever, then we gotta look at moving the horseshoe pitch somewhere else. So perhaps moving ahead on those other three in the staff report may be a bit early. So I just want to get some clarity there, but also be mindful that there is, there is time, we, we have a deadline to meet. So some thoughts on that perhaps?
Mr. Howie?
Just in terms of timing again, Madam Chair, I, I would suggest you go ahead with those other three because they're questions. And see if we can get some answers, it might actually move the progress, process along a bit. And see if we can get some answers that might actually move the progress, process along a bit.
Okay, shall we move into public discussion?
Well, we'll still get, I would still just get some more feedback from around the table until council has all of their bits. So then we know exactly what we're sort of concluded on and then I would put it out for public.
I see, thank you, thanks for the clarification. Counselor Casper and then Parkinson?
Different Casper. I've been called a lot of bad things. Not that bad. So through the chair to Mr. Howie, how long, we, we, we're processing, we've made an application to the A L C to have that land removed from the A L C, from the, into the district's name. How long is that process? I mean, we've taken step one, how long would we anticipate that process? Because some of these questions will go away if we're successful.
If we're successful in-
Getting it out of the A L C and turning it just to- A L R, sorry, applying to the A L C to have the A L R designated.
It's, it's their timetable, but we try to get a response as quickly as we could. We tried it over the phone first and emails and that sort of thing and we're just waiting.
Because there was, there was somewhere in some of that documentation way back that they had no interest in, in, in keeping it in the A L R. I saw that written somewhere, somewhere along the line. And so these other questions would disappear then because we wouldn't have to ask them if we can have parking on there. Right? If it happened fast.
If it happened fast.
Okay.
In my experience.
Okay, thank you.
So, so there are two questions. One is, do you want to take, will you let us take the land out of the A L R? And then there are a couple smaller questions, which is, can, can we go ahead and do this?
Yes.
Which I think we could probably get answers to more quickly.
Yeah, and that's, that was my second question was to say, do we ask that at the same time so that we can proceed? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pearson and then Counselor Casper to the right. Right, sorry. We'll just, I'll look at you and then you'll know.
Okay, okay, my questions are, in the, where we have the red box around the two-two-five-zero, is that going to be all parking? This whole area here? Is that parking? I have no idea.
It would make sense to have that parking.
So that, that's what the intent is, so that this would be parking? And then just asking whether the trail is going through the parking lot as it's shown here?
Just for practical purposes, I think Mr. Blackwell's etched it in there approximately.
Okay, and the district owns the parcel beside it, which is RU two? So it, could that not be used for parking there? So why, just asking, where, pardon?
There's a lot of fill in Sawdust and I don't know one down in there.
Are they parking there already?
No.
For, for the sports field?
No.
So then if the horseshoe pitch was to go back over there, then the parking could be all around here then, correct? If it was out of the A L R, that is.
Where, where do you mean exactly?
It's RU two there, it's in the yellow, in the yellow box there.
So are you suggesting, just through the chair, that, if I hear you right, that the horseshoes go back into the usable spot and then the parking is in the RU two?
Yep.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's, it's a huge spot there. You'd probably get a lot more cars in there. No, I don't know, just asking, you guys went? Oh, you didn't look there?
That was suggested in the last report.
One thing that this, one thing that this map doesn't show is, is the contours. And so I'm not sure if the contour is like that or like that or what's in there. Which is actually one of the reasons for the study.
I guess it looks like three times as much room. Okay, thank you.
All right. Casper?
So is, is it possible in these discussions with the land commission to actually, in the interim, to get permission to do the trail if it's, if it's not an asphalted surface? Because I think that's probably one of their main concerns. Asphalt is pretty much deemed to be permanent. And because the Galloping Goose isn't asphalt. And if we're doing a connection, then to me it's gravel to gravel, right? And you can get great material that will compact almost as hard as asphalt. So, and it could help reduce our total costs and we get more bang for our buck. But I will tell you one thing, I'm not in favor at any time of spending thirty-eight thousand dollars to hire a private company to supervise this job. I, I thought council put that to bed at our last meeting. We made a decision not to proceed with that contract. To me, that's a dead issue. I, I won't support any, any of that discussion anymore. I, I think that if we do the initial survey and we go out to tender on, on, on a standard that we've agreed to adopt and, and then work with whoever gets the job on, on constructing the trail and whatever else has to be done. That's just my humble opinion. Because if you look around this community, there's a lot of trails that were built that way with no certified engineer contracted supervision at all. And to me, you know, we've got good skills in our community and our staff to actually make this project work. So anyway, I, I think we should move on.
So I'll make a motion then that the committee directs staff to, to move forward immediately on surveying the north line to obtain cost of clearing, the cost of the usable lands, and to also proceed with answers to the next steps as outlined in the staff report. So numbers one, two, and three. And then to also add though, that on, under number two, where it says staff will be confirming with the A L C if a gravelled multi-use trail can be permitted within the A L R, it would, it should also be that staff will confirm with the A L C and the ministry that the gravelled multi-use trail. And I guess that is sort of answered in number three anyway because it's the location and the treatment. So actually that isn't needed because you've covered it, thank you. So that would be my motion and that if possible, that we have this, both the survey and these answers back for the July twentieth meeting.
Counselor.
No, not in a committee in the whole, it's, it's out there. So that at least will move us forward then and then we'll have a staff report and then we can then say, okay, this is going to work. Perhaps the different groups can connect back with the task force. If there's any feedback on this decision tonight, if you could touch base with Counselor Pearson on your thoughts because there has been some, some dialogue from some of the user groups since the meeting that you had on site. And perhaps this will move us along. And in terms of the no cutting, that's just going to depend on how long that drought stays in place. Hopefully it'll end soon, but it doesn't look that way. Thank you.
Ms. Nelson, do you have a comment?
Can I ask a question just for clarity? When, when you say clearing, are we just talking the trail, potential trail location and the potential sites?
It would be like, let's say hypothetically, the horseshoe club pitches would fit in that area. So then, yeah, it would be both the area for the pitches and for the trail. It would have to be both because the trail has to go through that area. So it would be both, if it goes in sort of on this dotted line as, as outlined on this dotted line here. Yeah, is that what your understanding is as well from the committee? Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right, so with that, we will open it to public input. So please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record if you have a comment.
Rickob Day, six-seven-four-zero, Road Night Drive, Sioux Horseshoe Club. The discussion tonight is under the assumption that the horseshoe courts will fit in the north end. We, right now, as it, as it stands at the north end, usable area is about approximately thirty-nine, thirty-nine hundred square feet without filling and digging down into the bank. The existing space that we're allowed with our agreement is sixty-four hundred square feet. And the approximate area for the total build out that we were deciding to do in, in two thousand and eleven is eight thousand square feet. So the area that's usable in the north end, if I can get this thing to work here for you. You can see it there anyway, it's, the sixty-six by sixty area would only allow us to have six courts. Right now, as it stands, we have a membership almost ready for twelve courts. So I, my question is, how long will this take to clear this area, get it prepared for the future twelve courts, which we have now got an agreement for?
Yes, if you have an answer, thank you, Ms.
Well, first of all, it would, it, it will depend. I mean, you're, you're also guessing at that bit, right? I mean, I, I understand and, you know, and I appreciate the, the, my question goes back to the originalist. If we don't know where that property line is-
Correct.
You can't draw that, that diagram on there accurately.
We, we went up there on Sunday, Friday. Yeah, we measured it out up there and if you take the, the previous picture, the one that's got the, yeah, that one there, the hydro right away, which is right across the street from, and it shows on this map. Nope, the other one. There.
Right.
Okay, so you can see where the hydro right away on the right-hand side crosses where it comes out onto Sioux River Road there. Okay, and the Girl Guides property is right directly across from that, the, the property line.
Do you see that? Yeah, I see where you're talking about up at the top of the picture there.
Right, okay. Now, if you, we went into the bush there, there's brand-new fence posts and wire fencing built just into the bush exactly to that spot. Now, that to me would be saying that the Girl Guides have replaced that fencing to their edge of their property.
So, but which way does that angle go?
The angle-
Of that property line?
Well, I'm assuming it goes the way that goes.
So that would, you just said you're assuming and I, like-
But that doesn't matter which way it goes, if it goes at that, at a ten-degree angle from that point or, or a ninety-degree angle from that point, it doesn't matter because there's not enough room to proceed with more courts in that area. Never mind putting a pathway in there which is ten feet wide. Okay, seventeen feet wide. So to, to, to our liking is that we feel that this will not fit there at all. And considering we do have an agreement with the other area through the A L R, A L R to proceed with sixteen courts and a clubhouse. And we're not going to get that up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Von Dumont, seven-oh-nine-four, West Coast Road. Maybe you got some answers for your, your A L R. They meet six, monthly, every six months. So if you get your application in in the wrong time, you have to wait six months. So that's the time factor, you have to find out when their last meeting was and tell you when their next meeting will be. The second thing is that when we made application to the land commission, they gave us permission to park on all that property for the horseshoe pitch. So we have the right to park everywhere that's flat there now as well as putting a thousand-square-foot building in. So we've got permission in writing of all of that now. So whether they use it for parking or whether we use it for the horseshoe pitch, we have the right to have parking on the property. We've been given that permission by the A L C. So there's no argument about it that we can park cars there. So that, the whole issue, if you're going to put the trail down there, there's a, a road down there now and, and putting it on a map that, that, you know, that piece there, they say is a horseshoe pitch, like that's like twenty-five feet deep there. You have to be a mountain goat just to walk down it. So if you move that back to the seventeen feet there, we really don't have room for six. And the trail that does exist that goes down to the flats comes in very closely along that bank. And I was hoping that after our discussions up there, that we were looking for some other avenues to bring that trail where we don't have to deal with River Road. And there was an option that, of going through Butler's property that we don't seem to have addressed in your one, two, three, four. And that might be worthwhile if that as part of the stream reclamation, it might be an ideal place to put that bicycle trail from the Galloping Goose. And maybe you'll opt to deal or work with Mr. Butler or the Butler Brothers Company. But it's an option that hasn't been discussed here tonight and I think it should be. Thank you.
Well, and just to answer to you, Mr. Dumont, is that Counselor Ray and I, and we did talk about that down there, but that involves a, a private property owner. So that's a negotiation that we'd have to do separately from this process. What our, what our, what we came away from there was, was to say, okay, in the spirit of collaboration, that we're going to try and see if this fits. Again, I like to see the property line and that's what I think the, the motion is, to see if all this will fit in there. If it doesn't fit in there, well, then we have other options that we have to talk about. So, you know, a discussion with a private property owner, separate from this. This is the public piece of it, what we actually can control within our control. And again, you know, I think that from the outset, through two council terms, or one and a half now, or one and a quarter, I've been a supporter of the horseshoe clubs and getting them a location. I think this is an alternative that may work. At the end of the day, we might come back and, and somebody says, you know what, it's not going to fit one hundred percent guaranteed and we can't do it. That's not the position that I want to take now. The position I want to take is explore the options, see what we can come up. Because there's three, there's three potential uses there. If it doesn't work, well, you know, till July twentieth, I mean, you guys, you know, and, and fairness to you guys, I know you've, you've, you've been back and forth, bounced around. But I think, given the location of that, where that, that land was, and I, I, for, I for one, never envisioned the horseshoe pitch being where, where, where it's currently fenced off. That's, that's just my opinion and I'm not sure, and I don't want to get into that debate because that just happened. So this is a spirit of collaboration to see if we can make it work in there. We've talked to some construction people to say that it's potential for fill to make it the area. I don't expect you guys to get less of an area than what you can start off with. With the potential of moving south with fill. We had some construction experts that told me that it wasn't really that difficult to move forward, bringing fill this way. They were on site with us that night down there. They're also in the audience, so maybe they could also comment, but, and maybe they don't want to, I don't know. But the idea is to try this because it's going to, it's really affecting the public. The visual impact of where that's fenced off now, I've had no less than a hundred people complain to me. So I'm trying to satisfy the other people, the soccer people, the slow pitch people and all that. I recognize the horseshoe pitch, pitch people have, have been promised something. Spirit of collaboration, let's see if this will work. That's all I'm asking you. That's what I, you know, that's the purpose of, of us meeting down there and the purpose of this discussion tonight, just to let the other counselors know.
If you'd like to comment on that, please step up to the mic, thanks.
I just have one question, was the time limit that, right now, we were in preparation just to start forming our courts. And now we've been set back now over a month because of that decision came down. We, I can see maybe two thousand and seventeen before we get in there, if we're lucky. So I don't know what you guys are wanting us to do here. I mean, if you really want us not to be in Sioux, tell us. Don't beat about the bush. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Any other questions, comments?
Dave Clark, seven thousand Mallrick Place, and I'm with the Community Association. I'd just like to thank you guys for suggesting we met, meet down there. As far as I'm concerned, the meeting went pretty good and everybody agreed at the end of it, there was, there was room to work down there. And also, there's room to the south if they wanted to move out there later on. And there's lots of fill around Suk and I'm sure people would be willing to dump it there for free than pay somewhere else to dump it. And as far as the horseshoes, they don't have to be in level ground, they can be stepped down. These horseshoes, they don't have to be leveled right across, which would cut down some of the slope in that bank. And if the bike trail goes in, it would also help it slope down too. So, you're gaining more land by stepping the horseshoes down. And the way they're talking here now tonight, that they could control the parking and everything on the park, that sounds greedy. I mean, that's the community's park, not their park. I mean, we're supposed to be working together here. And some of the horseshoes are having second thoughts. They've already called, phoned the president and want to come back down to campground. So, they're not seeming to be happy wherever they are. We've had four pitched down at the campground and not once have they even asked to come down and play in them. They tell us they're not legal, they're legal length, the only thing is they don't have backstops on them. And it doesn't take much to put a couple of boards in, or post in and put a couple of boards across. So, and also in the ALR, horseshoes are allowed and parking's allowed. The only thing that's against the ALR right now is the bike trail. That's the only thing that's holding us up. And as far as that extra land on the south side, that's hog fuel. It's hog fuel. That's where all the fires were burning forever down there. You can't park in that. Thank you.
Tom Bly, seventy-one thirty West Coast Road. Boy, this is getting tiresome. There's quite a few issues here. You're going to survey, you better survey off that road. Because you've got an allowable distance, you have to be on that property and you're cutting right into that park area or into that horseshoe park area. So, that has to be surveyed too. For, that's number two, so there's two lines you're going to have to get there to start with. Has anybody ever thought of putting the parking lot up there? Where you want to put the horseshoe pitch? Has that ever entered anybody's mind? It'd be a good spot for it. Now, filling that thing up, there's going to be millions of yard, which I'm sure somebody here could tell us. A fill has to go in there. It's pretty difficult at this stage just to dump fill on ALR land. Or any land for that matter. It has to be approved, as we found out with Waltham's Way. So, I, I just don't understand it. And up there at the north end right now, where are you going to have the people park that are going to play horseshoes? It's not going to be on that piece of property unless you fill it. There's just no room there. You can survey it and come up with an accurate, a real accurate amount of land we got there, but I'd be willing to bet it's going to be too small for all those amendments. And plus, the other factor is, I've discussed with some people today, we were going to have potential use of the Community Association's washrooms if we'd have come to an agreement with paying or keeping them clean or sharing the cost there. But that's two seconds across the road. A lot of people don't understand when you're playing horseshoes, you can't, when you're playing a league, you can't just stop the game for fifteen minutes while somebody walks down to the washroom. Because you're going to have to have lights in there because they're going to be there till twelve o'clock at night. So, there's a lot of issues here to look at that property. If it worked and they want to spend the money to fill it and fall the trees in there, so be it. But there's a lot of issues. And I'm telling you right now, to get it all fit in there, it's going to have to be filled right away to get the horseshoe pitches and parking for the people for the horseshoe pitches. And that, we have to put porta-potties in. Well, how long are they going to stay there? They don't stay too well in Suk here. They seem to get damaged. There seems to be a misconception here, that property was approved for a horseshoe pitch. It was cleared four and a half years ago by the people who started the horseshoe pitch. The property was always there for anybody in the community or the Community Association or anybody that wanted to use it. Nobody's tempted to use it until it was cleared. Then, oh my God, here's a nice slice of park. So, I don't know, fellas. It certainly has gone on long enough, as far as I'm concerned. And the other thing that I'd like to mention, I mentioned this to the past administration, if the people in Suk don't want to have a horseshoe pitch here, call a reverse referendum. It won't cost you any money. And I said this the last time, that if the people in Suk don't want a horseshoe pitch here, on a referendum, we're gone. Let the public decide of what they want here. That's my point. Thank you.
And Mayor Tate, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I hate to start off with this, but I have a one-year-old golden retriever at home who spends most of her time chasing her tail. Why every time I see her do that, do I think of this room? I mean, this is, I just listened to Mr. Bly and I wasn't going to say this, but I will now. This horseshoe pitching situation should never, ever have come to be. The reason being that the motion to bring this forward for the district to allow a horseshoe pitch on that piece of property was put forward by a member of council who is and was then a member of the horseshoe pitching club. It should never have been allowed at the table. So, don't talk to us about having a referendum if we don't want it. I haven't wanted it from the start for the simple reason that you should not be putting a private thing like that onto a public piece of property. I think it's wrong and it has never been identified properly as a park. Now, Counselor Casper mentioned something about eight hundred thousand dollars. Does anybody have a figure that we can rely on for the cost of that piece of property? Yeah, I thought somewhere in the six hundred thousand range. It was higher than that? Hi. Okay, well, this is, this is, this is important, so I know you hate hearing from me, but you better listen to this one. Because you have put in an application to remove this land from the ALR. And if that's not successful, you will pay that money back to the park acquisition fund because that park acquisition fund is for acquiring parkland. So, if you do not get that removed, if they say, no, we think we should have pineapples growing there or rice down on the patties or something. So, it's important that you pay attention to that removal because it's, well, you've basically broken a statute with this thing by, by going ahead with this without it actually being parkland. And the big question I have is when and where will the public ever get asked about these changes? The land doesn't belong to you and it doesn't belong to you, it belongs to all of us and we have a right to some discussion here. We have never had any on the bike trail to begin with and we don't really expect to get any now. But we should because that land belongs to us as well. We weren't invited down to the little meeting on the corner. Oh, speaking of the corner, are you going to cross the road at the Girl Guide corner? Does anybody wonder why the power pole on the Girl Guide corner is the biggest one on Suk River Road? Because that's a deadly corner, you're going to have to put a flashing light there. I cannot see you coming off of your so-called trail, going across to the other side on that corner. You all know the corner. You need to think about these things, all cost money. Okay, and parking, I don't agree with Mr. Dumont on the fact that they can park anywhere. I believe, and I could be wrong, I didn't bring the document from the land commission, I believe they said parking in, in front of where the current horseshoe thing is along the road allowance, but not everywhere else. The zoning bylaw for Suk, parking, permitted parking must, if you're going to build a parking place, so to speak, it must be on the property which has the principal use. Now, we all know that the principal use is across the road. So, you're going to have to take a look at that because that's in the zoning bylaw. The principal use on that property is horseshoes, but it's not going to be the one that gets the parking. The parking is all for the playing fields. So, there's another issue. We also have a policy in Suk that we have, when we remove land from the ALR, we don't have a net loss. So, somewhere that land has to be replaced. If we pull it out of the ALR, we have to replace it according to our own bylaws. So, there's a lot of things that go with this. And if you keep chasing your tails the way you've been chasing them, we're never going to get anywhere. And you have to let the people have a say. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Ellen Lourdes, five-five-two-six, Suk Road. I agree with Gail, as sometimes you just have to say no, like your children, you say no and mean it. You know, when people come forward with different applications and it looks, you're back and forth, back and forth, it's because you're indecisive. I remember Brenda saying something about her father saying, if you're not sure, then just say no. And, and I think counsel has to a little bit be more decisive than just say no. The park trail idea, nice idea, wonderful idea. Nice, sounds lovely going around there. What are the financial impacts? How does it affect the rest of Suk? How many users are there for this trail? What kind of revenue is there from this? Is there, is this really a benefit at this time? Is this something that we should be looking at at this time? We've reduced our maintenance costs because, because the cost is too high for looking after parks. What's the cost of maintenance if we put in this trail? Can we afford it? We've just knocked back because we don't want other parks being looked after. So, are we going to put in a park and not look after it? When we purchase something or decide to do anything, make a park a trail, we have to look after maintenance. You know, again, build it and they will come, but what will it cost you? You can build it, but how's it, how are you going to look after it? The Galping Goose is a prime example that was taken over by the CRD. And I've talked with them many times when they're out there wandering around. You've got the head of the CRD, he's out there cleaning sometimes because they can't afford the maintenance to look after the trail. So, you know, just sometimes you have to say no, just bite the bullet and say no. So, I'm just saying to this counsel, sometimes just say no. You can afford it, one of your strategic plans is to be financially and fiscally responsible. So, just be that. Thank you.
Tom Bly, seventy-one thirty West Coast Road. I want to answer Gail's question here. That is not a private club, or Mr. Clark's question, that is not a private club. If you play slow pitch and you're on a team, you pay a fee. You pay a fee for insurance and a fee to play on the team. Does that make that a private club across the road? I don't think so. If you play horseshoes on our horseshoe pitch and you join the league, you have to pay a fee. Twenty dollars of that goes for insurance for the players. When the teams are not playing on there, that land belongs to the public. You cannot have a private club on public property. So, then, anybody can bring their kids down there and play horseshoes. That's been hashed around here now for four and a half years. And Victoria, as far as maintenance goes on the horseshoe pitch, we will look after that as they do in Victoria. Somebody should go again and look at that club in Victoria, see how well it's maintained. It's a perfect club. Thank you.
The pitch itself may not be private, but as I understand it, they wish to build a private clubhouse on public land. And I won't be allowed in there, it's obviously private clubhouse. But we've done this before down at Prestige Hotel, where we have a room that we paid, I think it was over three hundred thousand dollars a year for what, four or five years? And, oh, we could use it all right, as long as they weren't using it. So, we don't get into these kinds of deals. And anybody that thinks that we can exist with eight hundred thousand dollars that we spent to buy this property and have the land commission running it, remember what happened across the river with our eleven-point-five hectare park that we got from Sun River, that was going to be a park forevermore. It's not a park anymore because they took it back. So, don't forget that when you're playing with the land commission.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Oh, Mr. Linell, come on up. Sorry about that.
I just, Carl Linell, sixty-nine thirty Sellers Drive, President of the Community Association. All I can say is, we've got four hundred and fifty kids last year, not kids, people registered for soccer, adults, some were adults. We got over three hundred registered for slow pitch. I just can't see how you can do this when you got close to seven, eight hundred people for, for nine people on the horseshoe pitch. And I got one more comment, if somebody gets killed down there because you've taken our parking away and they're parked on the side of the road, open the door or something. All I can feel is, I tried, it's on your shoulders now.
Any other comments, questions from the floor? Okay, great. If we can get a reading of the motion, just because it's been a while, I think since we've heard it.
The ones under next steps.
The ones under next steps, thank you. And all by July twentieth. Okay. Right, by July twentieth. Thank you very much, Ms. Temple. All right, any discussions on that motion? Mayor Tate?
Just some comments after the, the public input that occurred. To me, it's apparent that counsel supports the Horseshoe Club because we've been trying to find ways to work with this. There was some confusion in January as to the location. And so, rather than counsel saying, okay, we are going to trigger the thirty-eight termination clause, which we can do and just put an end to it all, it's like, no, let's try to find a way to continue to work with this. We landed, we received news, the successful news of the trail grant and there's a desire to move forward on that as well. And in addition, we know that the grant for the all-weather field has gone out as well. So, there's different moving pieces and I agree that, yes, our approach to this from the beginning was very haphazard. We should have acquired the land, done a plan and then looked at, but... We should have acquired the land, done a plan, and then looked at, but we're past that now. We've invited all different users to the property and now we're trying to make it work. So I appreciate that there's frustration in this. Council has an option to say, "You know what? Forget it. Put up a fence, no parking, no trail, no horseshoes, nothing, just let it be. No one can park on it, no one can bike on it, it'll just be a park and you can forage on it as you please and put an end-all, forget, return the grant and all of that." But no, at the same time, council wants an active community. We see the different needs, the different community groups, so we're trying to find a way to work together on this to accommodate everyone. I appreciate it's frustrating, it's equally as frustrating as us, um, going through emails and paperwork, like in the hundreds, you know, and it's easy to say, "You know what? Just pitch it all into the recycling bin and just whatever, we're done. We have other priorities to focus on and let's just forget it." But that's not what we want to do. We want an active, healthy community. We want our seniors to play, we want our youth to be engaged, and we want to see our parks active, unlike the ones that are just sitting empty throughout town. So that's why we're doing our best here to work with the moving pieces. We need to survey the north end, council wants to know where the line is, so that we have clarity on that. Maybe it will or will not work for parking or for the pitches, um, but it's a, it's a nice concept for a trail. Where it's going to cross after that? Well, I don't know, because we need to see if that end of the, end of it is feasible anyway. So let's just get some more answers for us, we'll have it in a week's time, and then we can move forward on it. Um, because we have, we're just trying to find a way to accommodate everyone, so is, I'd like to know, is everyone comfortable with the recommendation? Is there anything you want to change? Because at this point, um, we're making a decision to move along.
Councillor Pearson.
Thank you for your comments, uh, Mayor Tate. Sometimes we're picking up pieces and some of those are left over from one council or two councils ago. Never once have, have, have I, as a member of this council, ever said I didn't want the horseshoe pitch to exist or be in, in Suk. I've continued to work with them. The Community Association has a long history of doing really, really good things in our community, and when I invited, you know, when we, we suggested that you guys all get together down there at the horseshoe pitch, the best thing that I saw down there was people talking to each other. The spirit of Suk has always existed, and, and it can exist. So, you know, to echo Councillor Tate's statement, let's try and make this work for everybody. We may get some answers that, that we're going to have to go back to the drawing board again, but when we get done, we're going to be, we're going to have the right decision, not only for the, for the horseshoe pitch, the Community Association, and the people maybe who ride the bikes, but for the community at large, the benefit of, of, at large. You only have to stand in that parking lot and understand what it feels like politically for everybody saying, "There's a beautiful parking spot, but it's going to have a block off thing and, and people are parked on both sides of the river road." We're not fighting with the horseshoe pitch, we're trying to come up with a solution. We're not, you know, and, and again, our friends in the Community Association, it's not even their property. Gail Hall points out, we're not even allowed to have parking over there because it's not the principal use. We're trying to make something work. We're really lucky that we're going to have, uh, uh, an all-weather sports field down there. We're really lucky that we've got a slow pitch place to play, and, and, and we're really lucky as a community that we've got that big block of land on the other side of the road. You know, in the future generations are going to come along and say, "Wow, those guys were pretty smart in protecting that land." $800,000 seems like a lot of money now. But when we've protected the river estuary and we've got a natural bowl around there and we can look over at the flats, you know, 50 years from now, when we're all gone from the planet, and watch the horseshoes, or watch the, the fireworks if they're allowed to be on July, first people are going to say, "Wow, somebody was thinking." There is pain. There's pain sometimes in the beginning, but if you take the right steps and try to put the pieces back together, we didn't do everything right, but we're trying. And, and so I don't want to hear ever again that, that I'm not trying to work with people. So anyways, that's it, I'm voting for the motion.
All right, with that, I will call the question. Oh, no, right, sorry, we're bringing that to... Oh, sorry, yes, yes, move them. You know what? Welcome to sharing with Councillor Logans. All right, all in favor? Opposed? There we are, it's passed, the motion's passed, we'll move that to council. One more item on the agenda. You're looking all, it's just adjournment, don't look too scared. Just the last part, motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, sorry, public input on current issues.
I just want to say you, you're looking for, um, pins and such, there are old maps at the museum, surely, uh, you can find a, a map there that has old pin mark, pins on it, and alt, I might even have it. And, 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 and also, uh, has anybody approached, um, Girl Guides to find out if they have pins? Maybe they know where they are if they put the fence up.
Thank you, any other public issues?
Just to further that, I understand, I read in the paper that they just cut some trees down, and they did define the line that they weren't cutting down the district's trees, so maybe somebody does know where the line is.
Dave McLeimann, 6110 Kirby Road. I think we got to go ahead with the survey. I've been clearing land a lot of times and people have told me, there's where the line is and it's never the line. So until there's ribbons on the ground, and we don't need to resurvey the whole line. We're talking a hundred feet maybe, right? No, we don't have to go to the water. You should be able to survey that for 500 bucks in, in a week's time. So I don't think that's, uh, and, and then we can see, Kevin, Council Kevin, he's on the right track. Let's survey, see how much room we have, and then make a decision. Okay, thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn. Thank you all for sticking through the heat and have a great rest of your night.